I understand you actually have a life and we wish you well, but we do want to thank you for all the work you've done for us in the last five years. We've gotten very detailed in this report as we should. I kind of wanted to get a little bit 30,000 feet up. And just big picture, in the five years that you've been monitoring our jails, can you tell us what the biggest changes have been, both positive and negative? What's the biggest positive that we've moved forward on and have we gone backwards anywhere?
I mean, I think the biggest positive is that the culture in the jails has changed, that there's not a sense of we need to use force to ensure compliance by inmates and that there's more use of communication skills, there's better training. And I think the tension level in the jails has gone down as a result of all of that. I think, and I'm now looking at this more than just five years because I've been involved with it since 2011. So I think there's been a substantial change in the attitude and the approach, communications in the jails and in the level of force that's used. It's very, very rare that you see significant category three use of force involving strafes to inmates. Prior to the CCJV, broken bones that inmates suffered was not an uncommon situation. That rarely happens now. And the department, they are all forced to be reported, they treat that very seriously. And the cameras there are in place and let you see what happened. So I think there's been a significant change in both the use of force and in the culture in the tails and a very positive one.
Have we gone backwards anywhere?
I don't know that we've gone backwards anywhere. I think that there are areas where we just haven't made the progress that you would think they would have made. And it's really in providing the treatment and the programming for inmates suffering mental illnesses. That's been a frustration that they haven't made more progress in that area than I would like to have seen. I don't think they've gone backwards as such. They just haven't made the progress that I would like.
Okay, thank you. And I noticed that the number of administrative investigations opened by the sheriff's department has decreased each year, hitting an all-time low last year in 2019. In your opinion, is this cause for concern or is this more reflection of the progress that we're making?
Let's put that in context. There were two reports by the inspector general's office in the first six months after Sheriff Villanueva came into office, which seemed to indicate a significant drop-off in the number of administrative investigations. And I think that was some cause for concern. Now, there were some explanations and I did get from the department summaries of all of the prior investigations that had been discontinued. And the number that then in the second half of 2019 was pretty similar to the number that had been in the second half of 2018 when Sheriff McDonald was Sheriff McDonald's last year. So I was less concerned that there was really going to be a push to decrease the number of administrative investigations. It's still at a, you know, a 10-year low. And so it's a little bit hard to assess whether that's a significant problem. But when I compared the second six months under Sheriff Villanueva to the last six months under Sheriff McDonald, they were pretty similar in terms of the numbers. So I think it's something that needs to be watched. And I think the office of inspector general is in good position to do that. I'm less concerned about it than I was when I read the inspector general's report in 2019.
Okay, well, thank you. And again, thank you for your service and the work that you've done to ensure the safety of our jails and those who reside within them. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I also want to thank our court-appointed jail monitor, Mr. Richard Druyan, for your work. I know that this has been an extremely difficult time for us in the last few years, but more importantly, as you stated in your comments and report regarding COVID-19 and how that has impacted some of the progress in certain areas. But as you and I know, back in 2015, the DOJ reached this agreement with the county and the sheriff's department to, in fact, protect people inside LA County jails from serious suicide risks and excessive force and to ensure that the sheriff's department provided constitutionally required adequate care for people who were incarcerated with serious mental illness. And as you know, the settlement agreement would ensure that those reforms ordered by the courts would be fully implemented in an environment of transparency to ensure that the most vulnerable in our jails were protected while they were being held. I believe it's imperative that we continue to protect at all costs people with mental health needs from harm, harassment, and abuse by custody deputies. Concurrently, the county must continue its efforts, I believe, in creating a care-first, jail-last vision and focus on continuing to decarcerate and decriminalize people with mental illness and mental health needs. Though this report indicates there were over 30 provisions in the settlement agreement with the sheriff's department and we're in substantial compliance, what remains is that there is still major concern that there is still such inadequacy in the offering of therapeutic services and a lack of structure in mental health treatment and a lack of out-of-cell time for people with mental health needs, all of which I believe are vital to ensure that those with serious mental illness recover. It seems like under these circumstances, the people with mental health needs will continue to decompensate while their illness has become more acute. This is something that I really believe that our board has really tried to address as we move forward to embrace the care-first, jail-last vision. And we have been taking steps, as has been outlined and mentioned by some of the board members. Supervisor Kuhl mentioned some of the reforms that were already taking place with the recent passage of Measure J and also the working group that we have looking at M.C.J., as well as the alternatives to incarceration and other reforms. I believe all of those are, in fact, outside areas that are taking place that perhaps your jurisdiction, as was pointed out by Supervisor Kuhl, may be a little disjointed. That's why I think we do have to continue to work towards seeing how we can provide the best planning for the future for those inmates that will remain in our care and to provide those that don't pose a serious threat to be released and integrated back into our communities through other community-based programming and things of that nature. So I do want to thank you for your help and your assistance and your response in your report. And I know that this is your last report to our board and you'll be retiring after serving in this job for the last five years. And I want to thank you again for your service to the residents of LA County. And just regarding your conclusion in the report that despite the progress, we still face many challenges in addressing mental health provisions as outlined in the settlement. So again, I want to thank you and hope that we can continue as the board moves forward to, again, prioritize the care-first, jail-last components that we all know will be also voting on at this meeting that I help will reform and really help to put in place the kinds of support systems that this report has pointed out to us. So thank you very much, Mr. Druyan, for your support and for your courage and being a part of this problem-solving effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Druyan, one last thing. You know, it occurred to me when you talked about staffing. Before Dr. Galley left to go up to the state, he came to this board and asked the board to authorize incentives to get staffing increases based on, you know, paying off medical tuition and things like that. And so I'm going to ask for a status from, I guess it's DHS and DMH regarding, and the CEO regarding where we are on that and how the staffing is going and what we can do to ensure the staffing levels are adequate and that we are providing proper care for those individuals that are currently housed in our jails. So with that, any other comments?
Chair, if I may.
Supervisor Ridley, comments?
I begin by thanking Richard Druyan for his service. We've had a number of conversations over the decade, beginning with the Commission on Jail Violence, where he served admirably and continued the work of monitoring. And so it's been a full decade. Richard, and you've had a front-row seat as relates to reform in the county of Los Angeles. You're no stranger to this in terms of your knowledge at the city of Los Angeles as well, so you have a basis for comparison. And I think considerable progress has been made, at least conceptually, in terms of what reform means, what it looks like, and it's evolved to a level of policy that I think is rather substantial. We lay claim to care first and jail last as what we aspire to, and I think it's appropriate. And I further believe that all of what we do should square with that, should align with that, should cohere in a way that causes us to speak in a manner that causes us to continue to refine what rehabilitation model look like, should look like. And that work is yet in process. Working group is in place doing that, guided in part by the CEO along with the respective health departments. And it's a good thing. And so the work continues to evolve. It's important work. It's unmistakably critical in terms of issues of human rights, issues of civil rights. And just think, Richard, you started all of this and you go off into retirement with a sense of perspective that should cause you to be proud of what you have been associated with. And with that, Madam Chair, I wish Mr. Druyan the best in his retirement. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Ridley Thomas. I would say this, I think, started when you and Supervisor Malina and Supervisor Yaroszki and others pushed for reforms and the CCJV review of jail operations. I think that back in 2011 really started the ball rolling. And I think things have made substantial progress and I think, as you point out, things have evolved as well and there are new challenges. So I appreciate the opportunity to have served the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this item is before us and I've asked for a report back on the status of staffing in our jails under DHS with CEO report back with that, Madam Executive Officer. I'll move it, seconded by Supervisor Hahn, Madam Executive Officer.
Item six to receive a file and request a report back.
I'm asking for a report back on what Dr. Galley came and talked to the board about in terms of getting staffing in our jails at the current level. And Dr. Richard Druyan referenced the fact that staffing level continues to be a problem. So I just want to know what the status is of our recruitment in our jails.
So, Madam Chair, you did distribute a proposed motion last night.
No, I'm not introducing that motion.
Okay. I see. So just a report for asking for a report back on staffing levels.
Correct. I just, when Dr. Druyan, when Mr. Druyan was talking about the staffing levels, I had a, I remembered how Dr. Galley came in and talked to us about how hard it was to get staffing there and there were a lot of staff that were working double shifts and I asked him to do some incentives. And then it kind of dropped off when he went up to Sacramento and I was just wanting to know what the status is of our recruitment efforts in our jails. That was it. That was asking for a report back.
So that's it. I think we have to always clarify for the, you know, for the minutes because, so the motion that we saw is not being asked by you, but only a report back on staffing levels and how they might be improved.
I have not introduced a motion other than my verbal report back.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I appreciate the clarification.
You got it. All right. Madam Executive Officer?
Item six to receive a file and request a report back on recruitment efforts is before you, Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl?
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go on to item number 10, ratification of Assembly Bill 1185-McCarthy on Sheriff Oversight in Los Angeles County. That was held by Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you also to Supervisor Kuhl for co-authoring this motion, just as you did when the motion I authored back in August. When I put forward the motion in August, it was very apparent that we, as the board, needed our county legislative affairs team to advocate for Assembly Member McCarthy's bill, AB 1185. As you know, AB 1185 would allow Board of Supervisors across the counties in California to create a Sheriff's Oversight Commission and Inspector General. And additionally, these bodies would also be given subpoena power. Thankfully, our good governor signed the bill into law at the end of September. And as you know, Los Angeles County and the board was proactive in creating the Office of Inspector General in 2014 and the Sheriff's Civilian Oversight Commission back in 2016 to ensure transparency and hold the sheriff's department accountable. And due to the incredible hard work and persistence of the community, and I have to give them a big shout-out, all the advocates, in March of this year, the voters of Los Angeles County enhanced the oversight ability of the commission by giving it subpoena power. This board and I have continued to keep sheriff transparency and accountability as a top priority. And I recognize that oversight of law enforcement is a big part of public safety. And I'll continue to support these oversight bodies that the board has created with the community. And I will continue to demand that the sheriff comply with the law to collaborate with the Civilian Oversight Commission and allow the Office of Inspector General to do its job of conducting independent investigations. This motion is another reflection, I believe, of our commitment. In January 1st, 2021, AB 1185 will become law of this state and LA County will comply with the law. Public safety, as you know, can't be assured if law enforcement is above the law. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Kuhl.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thanks to Supervisor Solis for bringing this motion and inviting me to co-author. We are asking our colleagues to join us in ratifying all of the aspects of AB 1185. But in an interesting way, it's actually the other way around because we were already doing this. And 1185 has indicated that if other counties wish to do it, to ratify the power, it also underscores that the county actually has the subpoena power and is able to delegate it. And that is what we have been saying. But it does add one thing because we already have a civilian oversight commission, we already have an Office of Inspector General, because it was allowed by law and also approved by our voters in Measure R, so the COC also has subpoena power. So what we're really doing is, I think, taking one remaining step by ratifying and adopting the sections of 1185, and that is to empower our inspector general with subpoena power as well. So I was very pleased to co-author the motion and ask for a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else has requested to speak on this item, it is before us, moved by Supervisor Solis, seconded by Supervisor Kuhl to approve this item. Madam Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 10 is before you. Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl?
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Now, we are on item number 14, Comprehensive Public Safety Reinvestment Plan. Supervisor Solis, you held this item?
Yes, thank you again, Madam Chair. When 1.3 million residents of LA County overwhelmingly voted for Measure R, the Civilian Police Oversight Commission and the Jail Plan Initiative in March of 2020, the voters supported the two items that this measure would do. And that is, one, it would grant the Sheriff's Civilian Oversight Commission subpoena power; two, it would authorize the commission to develop a plan to reduce the jail population and incarceration in LA County. The commission has unfortunately had to use the newly granted subpoena power against the sheriff in May of 2020 as the sheriff continues to show his contempt of the will of the community through his defiance. The second component of Measure R, however, still needs to be actualized. The commission, in response, did create an ad hoc committee, as the commission, to release a report to the public and to the board, a feasibility study to reduce Los Angeles County's jail population and to reinvest jail system costs in prevention and mental health treatment, including a timeline for resourcing and implementing strategies to meet the goal. I understand that the task is a large undertaking and due to the commitment of the board through its embrace of the care-first, jail-last approach, some of the work may have been done due to the board-created Alternatives to Incarceration Initiative and the recent hiring of the executive director over the initiative. However, we still wait for a comprehensive plan to be delivered and implemented. So this motion will help us provide that tool to allow us to move forward and provide for the commission to provide a report back to us so we can fulfill what we were asked to do by the voters. And I would ask that the draft of the plan be introduced back to us by December 8th of this year, in collaboration, obviously, with the various criminal justice partners like the ATI Initiative, ODR, and community stakeholders. And I look forward to their public presentation of a strategy on the delivery of the voter-supported plan by January 26th of 2021. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I ask for your aye vote.
Seeing that nobody else has requested to speak on this item, it is before us. Item number 14 is before us, moved by Supervisor Solis, seconded by Supervisor Kuhl. Madam Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 14 is before you. Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl?
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Now, we are moving on to item number 16, Report Regarding Options for Removing the Sheriff. This was held by Supervisor Ridley Thomas.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I want to thank Supervisor Kuhl for co-authoring this motion. I want to say thank you also to the well over 600 people who took time to make a comment on this issue. To be clear to everyone, that the sheriff has the critical responsibility of protecting the public safety. And as the manager for a law enforcement agency that is the largest county in the nation, sheriff is responsible for providing services in more than 40 cities and over 100 unincorporated areas. Madam Chair, it's fair to say that this expansive authority and responsibility of the sheriff's department significantly impacts the everyday lives of county residents. May I assert that accountability matters. Its absence contributes to violations of constitutional and human rights. It inhibits the department's efforts to make public safety real and/or believable, and too often, it undermines the rule of law, an essential part of life in a democratic society. In passing Measure R, which we just discussed, this past month, March, you know, voters overwhelmingly indicated that they want a sheriff who is accountable to more than just a four-year election cycle. But despite expansive efforts to increase public confidence through oversight over the past several years, achieving fundamental reforms remain a challenge, to put it mildly. So to ensure the public safety and the administration of justice, the county must thoroughly assess its ability to hold the sheriff accountable and to explore a full range of options to ensure transparency. Madam Chair and colleagues, I wish to make reference to an article that was written in February of 2014. I submitted this to the Huffington Post, and it seems to me to be apt for our consideration today. Permit me to read the following. "In 1850, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department was mostly a volunteer organization that served a population of just over 3,000 people. And Los Angeles was really what might be described as the Wild West. Thousands of men with gold fever were rushing into our new state. Fugitives from justice found California a safe hideout. Shootouts and duels were common, and Los Angeles held the dubious distinction of having the highest murder rate in the nation." That was in 1850. Fast forward to where we are today, members of the board, and you'll find that despite the exponential growth in the county's population, now well over 10 million in contrast to 3,000, and tremendous advances of modern-day policing, we are still beholden to what could be described as an anachronistic model of law enforcement. We hold a popularity contest for arguably our most important law enforcement position. Try to imagine the electing of chief of police, and then we are left without a mechanism to ensure transparency and to hold the sheriff accountable. The result? The result is that we have something worse than democracy. We have the illusion of democracy. But a real democracy provides for civic engagement. The franchise is neither the beginning nor the end of citizens' rights and responsibility. It means it is a means to an end. Furthermore, real democracy provides a means for civic engagement such as an independent citizen's oversight paddle because there is an expectation of public participation and guidance. When dealing with law enforcement, that means a constant dialogue between the public and law enforcement with respect to civil rights, transparency, and accountability. It means, then, that the system, and I end the quote, "that we have labored under" is no longer useful in terms of modern policing and standards of accountability. Therefore, we bring this issue to fore here and now. It's vital for the county's residents to know that their public safety concerns have been heard. The people of Los Angeles County have expressed their views. They've demanded more, and it's my view, Madam Chair, members of the board, they deserve better. This does not supplant their expressed view as is made clear at the voting box. It doesn't take away their right to vote. It essentially says, explore what needs to be in place for our collective consideration and potentially for the consideration of the electorate. So it seems to me that this is time for us to move through this decade of what has been a rather remarkable degree of reform that has been advanced. And if we ultimately wish to make sure that public safety is real in the context of Los Angeles County, I believe we have to have more accountability, more transparency, and the exploration of how we get there through the potential removal of the sheriff, should it be deemed appropriate, and/or the very notion of an appointed sheriff or lead law enforcement officer rather than elected. Madam Chair, that's my opening remarks. I'm open to further discussion and debate on the matter. It seems to me that it's clear that the time has come for us to move forward. Thank you.
Supervisor Kewell?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Normally, I would say, you know, I'm very pleased to co-author a motion, et cetera, but this is a very different kind of motion, and I think it's important to emphasize that neither Supervisor Ridley Thomas nor I nor any of the others who have criticized the sheriff, take any pleasure in it. It has become somewhat of a sad situation. The media characterizes this as some kind of, you know, struggle or tip or argument or whatever because I think it serves their purpose to make it sound like there's, you know, credibility or some kind of a fight on both sides. It's really quite different. We have had experience of this sheriff, this particular sheriff, since he was elected and a couple of sheriffs before him. And we are quite aware, even some of us who were in Sacramento representing various parts of this county, of the actual good behavior in which a sheriff can engage, in terms of their relationship with the board, in terms of their taking their budget seriously, in terms of being transparent, in terms of, you know, being forthcoming. Unfortunately, and I really mean that, this has not been the case with the current sheriff. Even to the extent of telling the medical examiner coroner, you know, not to release the results of an autopsy, and other ways in which we have not been able to get information, where subpoenas have been issued to the sheriff and simply been ignored, where we have been castigated, you know, by him in his tweets. It's a pattern that's actually kind of familiar, but one that we actually had to think about. And I think that's what this motion is about and would encourage all my colleagues to think of it that way. We are not taking an action in this motion. We are essentially asking, in a situation where there is no adherence to the transparency needed in order to have any kind of oversight, where there is a flaunting of subpoenas, where there is a castigation, and I mean even up to engaging in name-calling on the part of the sheriff, where how it is we can maintain our duty to oversee the budget of that department, the treatment of employees in that department, and the safety of our constituents in all five districts. So this simply says, what are our options, if any, for removing or impeaching a sheriff? And we are not the first county to ask this question. Secondly, to really look at whether it might be a good idea and one that would need to be agreed upon by all 58 counties, really, to look at having an appointed sheriff. Thirdly, I find actually the most interesting, which is what legislative changes might be required for us to establish our own municipal police force. Every other of the 88 cities who have, the ones of those that have their own police force, hire the police chief and get to supervise the police chief. It is not elected in any of our county, in any of our cities. And so in our municipal duties, I think it would be interesting to explore whether that might be a better idea for us, as well as other kinds of services like court services, et cetera. So I agreed to co-author this motion, and I do believe that it is a very good action for the board to know and understand these kinds of options and am pleased to co-author. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Hahn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it's no secret that this board does not see eye to eye with this particular sheriff. And I do have to point out, it's not for lack of trying because we really have tried from the very beginning. It seems like this sheriff has acted like he's not accountable to anyone but himself. And we have stepped in and we found ourselves stepping in again and again over the last two years to try and do what we can within our authority to achieve the kind of accountability that the public deserves. We do that because it's our job as elected officials to ensure our communities can trust the law enforcement entity that is sworn to serve and protect them. But ultimately, the sheriff is an elected official too, and the voters of LA County elected him for a four-year term. That doesn't mean he's there to stay. Being an incumbent doesn't guarantee anything. But currently, there's two ways that voters can remove the sheriff. They can recall him, or they can vote him out when his term is up. That's how democracy works. And I, with all due respect to my colleagues, I don't think it's our job to remove an elected official. If the voters want to do that, it's totally within their right. And I absolutely don't support the way that this sheriff has dismissed the public's calls for accountability, transparency, and reform. And I hope he will listen seriously to these concerns instead of just responding defensively. And I think that the people who are pushing for this motion, even those who spoke during our public comment this morning, would have a very strong case for recalling them, should they choose to bring that to the voters. But frankly, I think this motion is unnecessary. We know what the county charter says about our sheriff, and we know that it's not within this board's authority to remove an elected sheriff. If we want to amend the charter, we know what it takes. We don't need a report back. We just put Measure J on the ballot to amend our charter, and we could do the same thing here. But we also know that the process is slow and probably wouldn't even be done before this sheriff is up for reelection. I think we're better off spending our time using our authority to continue to push for transparency, accountability, and reform. And if the voters want a new sheriff, they have their options. And I will tell you, all counties in California elect their sheriff, as we know. It's part of our state constitution, which would be something we would have to change. We already know that. But it's my experience that it is very, it is not acceptable to voters to take away a position where they have, they have history of electing. They don't like politicians to take that power from them. If they're used to electing the sheriff, they don't like the fact that we're going to remove that from them. So I'm going to vote no on this because I don't think it's necessary. I think we know what our options are if we want to change that. But I think the power lies with the people. And I think the people who elected this sheriff and are unhappy with this sheriff should do what they need to do to hold him accountable, and that's called an election. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't disagree with my colleagues that this is probably one of the most important votes in front of us today, and that has to do with this sheriff or any other sheriff that we have here in Los Angeles. And it has become apparent and evident that we're dealing with an elected official who has, in my opinion, refused to collaborate and cooperate, not just with the board, but also with other entities, you know, our inspector general, our civilian oversight, disrespect for our own directors and CEOs for LA County. And I, you know, I'm troubled by some of the statements that he's made. I understand that he wants to try to make amends, but I do think damage has been done. And I think, you know, the voters are very smart, and I know that we're also entrusted to make some very hard decisions. And we know other entities have reported out their dissatisfaction also with his performance. But I wanted to provide some context to what I believe is going on. And I did some of my own homework here because throughout the United States, we have a long history of electing sheriffs. In fact, 46 states elect sheriffs, and jurisdictions across the country have been rethinking the role and power of their sheriffs. All you have to do is look at what happened in terms of Arizona. Remember Sheriff Joe Arpaio and former sheriff David Clark in Milwaukee County, Wisconsin? These were sheriffs whose harmful and unethical behavior towards residents and incarcerated individuals made national headlines. Three states have never elected but appointed their sheriffs. Rhode Island, Hawaii, Alaska, and Connecticut joined the shortlist back in 1999 after decades of misconduct and abuse by a series of sheriffs. And there are also 13 counties in the U.S. that don't elect their sheriffs but are appointed, including Nassau and Westchester Counties in New York. What we have seen is that there are elected sheriffs with unmatched autonomy and a real lack of accountability, even in jurisdictions that have oversight. Think of what is happening right here in LA County. Despite two oversight bodies, the inspector general and civilian oversight commission, the sheriff continues to impede and thwart any resemblance of oversight or independent investigations into their operations. And there's recent research backed by trends that's showing that the unchecked power of the sheriff is becoming more problematic and troubling. What we end up seeing and what we're dealing with now is someone with a tremendous amount of power and no accountability with how that power is utilized. We should not feel bound to continue a history of electing sheriffs if it's not aligning with accountability and transparency. And it's unfortunate that we're at this impasse now. And we've heard calls for his resignation from the community and recently the civilian oversight commission. And we know, we all know that this is not a decision that is going to be lightly taken. But I have come to this decision in this manner, and I would like to present this for consideration, and it's an amendment. And I would like to have county council report back in writing and present to the board the options at the first board meeting on January 5th of 2021. The amended language would read as follows. "Instruct acting county council in conjunction with the inspector general and acting chief executive officer in consultation with the executive director of civilian oversight commission and justice advocates to report back in writing and present to the board at the first board meeting on January 5th, 2021." And then add the rest of the directives. It's important to me to make sure that options are shared with the board and with the public in community and open public space, but also that the voters of Los Angeles have also recently voted to allow for a fifth woman to join the Board of Supervisors. And what this report back will be, will be able to do is help advise the new board, the new reconvening board, that I think will also come perhaps to the same conclusions but be able to look at what options are there. And by waiting for the report back and accompanying presentation from the county council on January 5th of 2021, we'll be able to do so with our supervisor-elect Holly Mitchell of Supervisory District 2 as a part of the LA County Board of Supervisors. I think that moving ahead, we will all be able to work, I hope, together. But given the privileges that we have, I also think it's important because we are going to be constructing a new board, and to have that voice also heard, as well as the voice of our community, I think provides better, better transparency for all of us. So I would, I would ask if the author and co-author would accept that friendly amendment.
Thank you. I just have to say, this is a very interesting place for us all to be in concerning working relationships between the board and the sheriff. Sheriff Deana Weyva is independently elected, and there have been many sheriffs before him, and there will be certainly many more who will follow. I will say it again, we cannot make long-term policy decisions based on the short-term personalities that be. I will also state again, I do believe that the actions of the current sheriff and the relationship with this board have been to the detriment of our deputies on the line who are serving all of our communities each and every day. I do not support many of the actions and have had significant concerns with his ability to appropriately lead our sheriff's department, but I do support the office, and more importantly, I support our personnel. As I stated before, the voters made their decision in 2018, and they will have another opportunity in 2022 unless there's a community-led effort to vacate that seat prior to the next election cycle. I encourage this sheriff to be transparent and collaborative with the OIG and the COC, and I am going to take him up on his offer to meet and move forward to address the needs of the department, especially as it relates to transparency. Our communities, and I'm hearing from them loud and clear, are sick of hearing about the disagreements and they're fed up with being used as a pawn. I looked at the Alkina Sheriff Station, I looked at the Marina Del Rey Sheriff Station, I looked at our Parks Bureau, I looked at the host team. Each one of them, at one time or another, has been put on the chopping block, not based on what is right, but based on reactions to some of the things that the sheriff perceives our board has done. We cannot continue relations as they currently exist, and that is very clear. Our communities deserve better representation. We are elected to collaborate as servants of the public. And I, for one, and I told the sheriff this from day one, while I didn't endorse him, it does not mean I would not work with him. And if I didn't work with people that did not endorse me when I first ran, I would not be representing my constituency. He needs to recognize that we as electeds, all are in this together, and we have a duty and obligation. And I believe that while this motion, I understand what you said Supervisor Kewell regarding, you know, opportunities and all, I believe this motion is based more on personality and not based on need. And I'm confident and I trust our voters, as I did. I did not endorse Measure J, but I honor the fact that Measure J passed based on the will of the voters. And I will do the same as it relates to an elected sheriff. If the voters believe that the individual that they vote for is the appropriate individual, I will support whomever. And I will do the same as it relates to an elected sheriff. If the voters believe that the individual that they vote for is the appropriate individual, I will support whomever receives the most votes. So I too am to be voting no on this. I appreciate what you all are saying, but I just believe that this is unnecessary and quite frankly undermines the very democracy that we have in place, especially as elected officials moving forward. So with that, we have, we have a motion before us, and Supervisor Ridley Thomas, do you accept Supervisor Solis's amendment?
I do.
Okay, so Item 16, as amended, is before us. That will be moved by Supervisor Ridley Thomas, seconded by Supervisor Kuhl to approve this item. Madam Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 16, as amended, is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas, aye. Supervisor Kuhl.
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl, aye. Supervisor Hahn.
Oh.
Supervisor Hahn, no. Supervisor Barger.
No.
Supervisor Barger, no. Motion carries three to two.
Thank you. We are now.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Ridley Thomas. Item number 23 is before us, establishing an inclusive and transparent Measure J revenue allocation process, which was held by Supervisor Kuhl.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for mentioning Measure J in your last speech. I am really excited about this. This is a joyful measure for me. I want to thank Supervisor Solis for co-authoring Item 23. You know, we've been talking today a lot about the care-first, jail-last vision that we've all been working on and, and I think are justifiably proud about. But what we're celebrating today, or at least I am, is that the voters in L.A. County also said they're committed to that vision. They told us they want 10% of the funds. They agree that they contribute in local revenue for the county to be reinvested right back into their communities, and they want those funds to provide a variety of services and also alternatives to incarceration for their most vulnerable neighbors. Now, that means we also need to fulfill the mandate that Measure J places on us as a board to, quote, "establish an inclusive and transparent process on the allocation of funds." And that's what this motion does. First of all, it leans on the directors of our two transformative initiatives, Alternatives to Incarceration and the Anti-Racism Diversity and Inclusion Initiative, to lead this process. Second, it sets forth a 17-member Reimagine L.A. Advisory Committee to bring together a diverse group of stakeholders, service providers, labor, criminal justice system-impacted individuals, county department representatives, representatives of community-based or advocacy organizations, one each appointed by each of us, two labor reps, five individuals with lived experience or direct knowledge of the criminal justice system due to a family member's experience, including one with specific experience in the juvenile justice system. It also sets out the notion of subcommittees, so everybody can leverage their own expertise and add other people in to help with coming to these sets of recommendations. So let me be clear, we're asking a lot of this advisory committee. It's not form over substance. It's not just complying with the mandate. This is about a real commitment to work on behalf of those who entrusted these funds to us. So we want them to use a lot of tools to encourage participation, community surveys, community listening sessions, stakeholder policy summits. We ask them to maintain an emphasis on capacity building to help the county reimagine the way that we contract with community-based organizations. We want the committee to explore new opportunities for training and supporting community members so we can realize the goal we've been talking about for years of establishing pathways to high-quality employment in the public and the private sectors to reestablish some economic stability. Clearly, the work has to be grounded in data and evaluation, and then, of course, we ask them to carry out their work with a racial, gender, and social equity lens. So it's a lot to ask. Why? Because there's a lot at stake. Because our CEO's preliminary estimate is that the Measure J allocation, which would really start in the next budget year, might be somewhere between $360 billion and $490 billion a year. Of course, I would like the higher end of that estimate, but, you know, we'll be the ones to figure out what does it mean to be available as funding, and that's going to be up to the supervisors. But it's also a weighty responsibility for this committee to be purposeful and responsible, and the same for us. So I think that the Reimagine L.A. Advisory Committee, as envisioned in this motion, is the best way to achieve the responsibility placed upon us and to keep our promise to the voters. I ask for your aye vote, and I thank you all for your help in this large, large area of reform. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Solis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Supervisor Kuhl for inviting me to co-author not only the motion but the previous motions on Measure J. And as I've said in the past regarding the measure, let's let the voters decide, and guess what? They spoke. This is a victory that belongs to all the voters. The victory is one that L.A. County will benefit from greatly. And now I believe it's important that we as a board implement what the voters have asked us to do. And now that the county will be spending a minimum of 10% of its locally-generated funds, we'll do so in a transparent and inclusive manner, as evidenced by the motion. There is a great need in our communities. Just how the votes of this measure showed, how we're handling people experiencing homelessness, people with mental illness, substance abuse disorders can no longer be the status quo. Should the motion pass, the first step is to establish a Reimagine L.A. Advisory Committee, as was stated, to present to the board and how these precious funds can be used to help the most vulnerable in our communities. The committee is incredibly inclusive, and it will have members representing the Office of Diversion and Reentry, Department of Mental Health, Department of Public Health, Substance Abuse Prevention and Control Program of the Department of Public Health, and will also have community-based advocacy members, and yes, our labor representatives, and most importantly, people who have been impacted by the criminal justice system. I believe that this is the best way to go, and I am very honored to have been a part in a short way of helping this move. And I'm also very excited because the beauty of, of this motion also is that, at the top of the list, is that it really does prioritize care first and jail last. And I know that we've all been working, the advocates, everyone has been working so hard to put forward a motion for a plan to close Men's Central Jail, and now we're moving on creating restorative care villages, not just at LAC, USC, but other parts and around the county, and we're moving on building interim housing for people, one that's going to happen right here in my own district at the Vignis Lot in Chinatown. So as we move forward, let's move together. So I ask also respectfully that, that you all, members of the board, vote for this. And I do have one question, Madam Chair, for our acting CEO, Phoezia Davenport, if I might ask if she's available.
Sure. Phoezia?
I'm here, Supervisor.
Yes, thank you, Phoezia. I wanted to ask, I have been hearing that there have been several inquiries made about whether other municipalities, like the city of Los Angeles, would be able to receive some portion of Measure J funds. Can you please clarify and elaborate?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor, for that question. I do think that there is sometimes a misperception for some that Measure J represents like a new tax that is bringing in new revenue to the county of Los Angeles, but I think we all know in the county that that is not the case. What Measure J does is it allows us to take our existing revenue and then set 10% of that aside for direct community investments and for alternatives to incarceration. The motion is very specific and very clear as to what those community investments look like. A lot of them are invested in community-based organizations as well as the community-based service delivery model, and the same is true for investments in alternatives to incarceration. Many of those investments are focused on community-based health services and community-based diversion and reentry programs. To the extent that I think the motion is very clear as to the types of investments, the Measure J funds, it would be a mistake for other municipalities to look at this as a potential revenue source for them. I think the motion is very clear that, that this, these funds really should be focused on community-based services, as well as, as well as some of the existing services provided by the county. But again, those services would be directed to alternatives to incarceration, diversion and reentry programs, employment, access to capital for African-American businesses, and things of that nature.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hahn.
Hey, Madam Chair. Well, I just wanted to weigh in, like everybody, and thanks Supervisor Kuhl, Supervisor Solis for this motion and as well as your, your work on getting Measure J to the ballot. What a great time this is, and here's a perfect example of, you know, the people of L.A. County bringing us a charter amendment that they felt, long-term, would really change the, the course of human behavior in, in, in this county. And the voters agreed and voted decisively to move our county towards the care-first, jail-last vision that we have had on this board. Our budget is certainly a statement of our values, and with Measure J, voters said that L.A. County values meaning providing treatment over a jail cell, housing over homelessness, and jobs over poverty. I've been truly moved and humbled by the political engagement and activism that we have seen over the last few months from our communities all across our county. And passage of Measure J was an important step towards upending the status quo, but our work is not done. So thank you for envisioning a Reimagine L.A. Advisory Committee and putting this on our agenda today because we know this will help establish a transparent and inclusive process for determining how the 10% allocation will be spent. Measure J was put on the ballot because of the people, and it was passed by the people. So we need to make sure that the money allocation process continues to be driven by the people. And I believe this advisory committee will get us there. I'm proud to support this motion today, and it's really amazing with all the stress that the country kind of went through last week, it was, really felt good that here in L.A. County, we were decisive about our future and the direction we wanted to go in. Thanks to everyone out there who helped get out the vote, and thanks to all the L.A. County voters who turned up in record numbers to tell us that it's time to reimagine our L.A. County budget. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Hahn.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Supervisor Kuhl, we thank you for your leadership and initiation of the effort in this regard. The voters of L.A. County, once again, have shown themselves to be ahead of the rest of the nation with their support for greater investments in community well-being, as they did when they voted for Measure H in 2017, Measure W just a few years after. And today, voters in L.A. Counties and across the nation are sending a clear message that it's time for change, a unmistakably clear message. And under Measure J, this board can now continue to shift the county away from punitive approaches and create the model for true criminal justice reform that reflects the needs, the values, and the priorities of the residents of this county. The collection and analysis of population data will be critical to this vision and the advancement of the county's anti-racist policy agenda, Madam Chair and members of the board. The stakeholders who participated in the process of developing the ATI roadmap wisely recognized the value of using data to ensure all Measure J investments effectively responded to the community needs and promoted racial equity. To achieve this goal, it's critical that we maintain an inclusive process of allocating Measure J funds that adequately accounts for the painful reality of the racial inequality underlying the need for these very investments. So my amending motion seeks to align Measure J funding allocations with data that shows that African-Americans are disproportionately affected by the most punitive aspects of criminal justice work, the criminal justice system itself. Some of those data points were included in my motion from July to establish an anti-racist policy agenda for the county. My amending motion here also addresses a directive from the July motion that requests an annual update on the state of Black Los Angeles County from the Human Relations Commission and a local academic and research institution. The University of California at Los Angeles, Blackmail Institute, the Charles R. Drew University of Medicine and Science, and the University of Southern California are well-positioned with the local expertise, research capacity, and community-based partnerships to satisfy the county's ongoing need for specific hyper-local actionable data and to help us reimagine Los Angeles County. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I respectfully request the adoption of the amendment in consultation with the author of the motion, and I appreciate such consideration.
Does the author of the motion accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Great. All right, so I'm, I'm, I'm just going to make my comments short, and I, I agree. I mean, the voters have spoken clearly on their desire to have this board allocate a minimum of 10% of our general fund dollars to further invest in a community-based system of care and alternatives to incarceration. As I said all along, it's never been an either-or for me. This board has consistently invested and will now continue at a minimum of 10% across the board for just these type of services. I appreciate the efforts by my colleagues, Supervisor Kuhl and Solis, to get the ball rolling and making this process both transparent and practical. The more we discuss the ATI recommendations and Measure J allocations, the more I've come to realize that the overwhelming alignment with the transformation of Challenger probation camps in Lancaster, something we're looking at, moving it from a probation camp into something that is truly going to be transformational, not only for Challenger but for the people that come in contact with the services that are going to be provided. This facility will require some capital investments in order to serve in its new capacity as a restorative care village in the woefully underserved region of the Antelope Valley. Both Palmdale and Lancaster have been listed amongst the top five cities, spending far more to incarcerate than to provide services as part of UCLA's Million Dollar Hoods report. I want to take this opportunity to highlight this project and the significant impact that it will have on this community in particular. I would also like to restate my commitment to equitable services throughout the county, starting with our highest-need regions. We have significant opportunities here to transform lives for generations to come. This advisory committee will be key in forging a path for investment in our communities, and I do truly look forward to success to come. So with that, Madam Executive Officer, it will be moved by Supervisor Kuhl, seconded by Supervisor Solis. Would you please call the roll?
As amended.
Item 23, as amended. Item 23, as amended, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas, aye. Supervisor Kuhl.
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl, aye. Supervisor Hahn.
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn, aye. Supervisor Barger.
Aye.
Supervisor Barger, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. We are now moving on to Item 24, establishing a county of Los Angeles lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning business program. It was held by Supervisor Kuhl.
That was very well announced, Madam Chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really, I'm serious. I, I'm really grateful to the Department of Consumer and Business Affairs and to the Internal Services Department for all the work that they put in to the excellent report back that we got. that we got just last month that so clearly outlined the recommendations on how to move the effort represented in this motion forward. A thank you also to Supervisor Solis for being our co-author on this motion, as well as to the motion that we brought in August of 2019, asking that we take a look at our contracting with community business enterprise firms policy, the CBE policy, to clarify that it is inclusive of LGBTQ+-owned firms and to ensure that the county's formal contractor outreach programs are inclusive of these populations as well. You know, a lot of people don't know, and it's not as clear to people, that people in the LGBTQ+ community do experience disproportionate rates of poverty and homelessness and discrimination in employment and in the workplace, which can destabilize their housing and make it more unaffordable. They face widespread harassment and discrimination by housing providers as well. They're also significantly impacted by justice and child welfare systems, owing in large part to systemic oppression, as well as individual action resulting from conditioned bias. A considerable percentage of our youth experiencing homelessness identify as LGBTQ, between 20 and 45%, according to the Williams Institute. Family rejection of LGBTQ+ youth is a major factor contributing to high levels of homelessness. And as we found in a survey of our foster kids, although LGBTQ young people maybe are 5%, 6%, 7% of the population, over 20% of our foster kids and foster youth identify as LGBTQ. So all of that to say that my community as well continues to come up against barriers that have a lot of impact on their well-being and ability to thrive. So this motion is a really good step, a small step, but a good step, to acknowledge those barriers and try to do what we can to help alleviate some of them so that we're not overlooking our own, you know, failure to take it into account. The pandemic has deepened the need to uplift our residents who already faced significant obstacles, especially in our business communities, in non-COVID times. And a lot of people on the margins are hurting right now financially, and it ripples out to every aspect of life. So creating an LGBTQ+-owned business designation under the umbrella of the CBE program will increase our contracting and subcontracting opportunities for this historically disadvantaged population. I'm very grateful for your consideration of this initiative because I believe it will benefit a large number of our constituents. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Solis.
Yes, just briefly, thank you, Madam Chair, and also a big shout-out to Supervisor Kuhl for inviting me to be co-author on this motion. You know, the board is recognizing the importance of the county's spending power, and as Supervisor Kuhl said, we have taken many actions to ensure that businesses owned by women, minorities, disabled veterans, and other groups have full and equal access to county procurement and contracting opportunities. But the board has yet to explicitly include LGBTQ individuals in its contracting equity programs. So today, through this motion, the board will proudly create an LGBTQ+-owned business designation under the umbrella of the Community Business Enterprise Program. The COVID-19 pandemic has exposed and deepened social and economic inequalities for this community. This motion is especially urgent during this time of crisis, and this community stands to benefit greatly from its inclusion in the DCBA's Community Business Enterprise Program. And as we all know, while Proposition 16 did get a majority of the votes in L.A. County, it did not receive sufficient votes needed throughout the state. That's why it's even more important now than ever for the county to incentivize marginalized small businesses. Thank you, and I hope our colleagues will join us in passing this motion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing that no one else has requested to speak on this item, it is moved by Supervisor Kuhl, seconded by Supervisor Solis. Madam Executive Officer, please take the role.
Item 24 is before you. Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Ridley Thomas. Supervisor Ridley Thomas. Supervisor Kuhl.
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl, aye. Supervisor Han.
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker.
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas, are you on? Okay, we will move on to item number 25, updating the county eviction moratorium in light of Assembly Bill 3033 and federal eviction, and this was held by Supervisor Kuhl.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Quickly, we're pretty clear now that COVID-19 has created kind of a perfect storm for all of our struggling renters in the county. Hundreds of thousands of county households continuously face eviction because of their inability to pay rent, and, you know, their reduced income makes it very, very difficult. At the same time, we've actually seen that a majority of renters continue to pay some or all of their rent. And so that says a lot about the integrity of our local renters. But unfortunately, no matter how we try, the virus has forced us to be cautious about reopening our economy, and many people are still out of work or suffering reduced hours. And while the board usually considers moratorium extensions on a month-to-month basis, I think it's important this time to consider a two-month extension through the end of January, given the really sharp surge we've seen in COVID cases, but also the upcoming holidays because of our own break and the inability for us to take an action to extend the moratorium in December because we may be gone, or if not gone, at least not meeting. So I hope that we agree that no one should be threatened with eviction or made homeless, and that it would be good to extend these protections. Let me say a little bit about AB 3088, which protects residential tenants and mobile home space renters from eviction if they're unable to pay the rent between March 1st, 2020 and January 31st, 2021. We had already adopted protections, but as of October 1st, the county was preempted from continuing our local non-payment protections because they were replaced by that bill, by AB 3088. So under the county's non-payment protections, our tenants had 12 months after the end of the moratorium to repay back rent, but under AB 3088, tenants must pay a quarter of their monthly rent starting October 1st. So of course, we are needing to obey the state law, but the county's other tenant protections can remain in effect so long as the board continues to extend our eviction moratorium. And that includes protections from no-fault evictions, unauthorized occupants, pets, and nuisances. So I ask for your aye vote. I think it's important to continue this through the end of January. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Kuhl. Seeing that no one else has requested to speak on this item, moved by Supervisor.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just briefly, I just want to really commend Supervisor Kuhl on inviting me to join her on this motion. I think it's very clear to us right now, we are still in this pandemic, and we still need to provide eviction protections for many, many of our families. Our communities, especially in the First District, have been very hard-hit. It's hard enough just to put food on the table, but then to try to make rent, we have to continue the extension of our eviction moratorium now more than ever. And as already explained by Supervisor Kuhl, we're merely aligning where we can with the state legislation. So I would ask for an aye vote on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Supervisor Solis. Moved by Supervisor Kuhl, seconded by Supervisor Solis. Madam Executive Officer, please call the role.
Item 25 is before you. Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Ridley Thomas. Supervisor Kuhl.
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl, aye. Supervisor Han.
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker.
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Item 30 is a next-agenda item, but that was held with Supervisor Ridley Thomas, who has stepped out of the meeting, so we will continue that to the end of the board meeting and move on to item number 55, report on compliance with the ROSA agreement. And at this point, we've got a presentation by the Sheriff's Department as well, personnel. And I think each one of my colleagues may want to say something, but why don't we go ahead and invite Assistant Sheriff Bruce Chase, Commander Sergio Alamo, and Captain Larry Alva, Sheriff's Department, to present a report. Are they on?
Aye. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Assistant Sheriff Chase. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, and also the other honorable members of the board. As you're all aware, Provision 1.4 of the ROSA settlement agreement requires us to publicly report twice a year to the board on certain areas relating to compliance with the agreement. So I'll also have Captain Larry Alva and some members of his staff here with me. Commander Aloma had to step out, unfortunately, so those guys have day-to-day responsibility for overseeing compliance, so I'll have them here in case there are any detailed questions. This will be the first time we presented on this matter under the remote meeting protocols, so I just want to remind the public that the PowerPoint presentation, which would normally be displayed during our open discussion at the hall, is still available to members of the public via the board's website. In the interest of respecting everyone's time, we've also been asked to try and keep our presentation time to 15 minutes. So with the board's permission, I'll try to hit just the highlights of each slide and then allow for questions from any of the supervisors who may have specific areas of concern.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, yeah, and some of the areas may also overlap with information already discussed during Mr. Drueyan's earlier presentation on DOJ. And I also like to take the time to join and echo the board's comments, thanking Mr. Drueyan for working with us over the years. I had the pleasure of meeting him first during the Citizens Commission on Jail Violence when I was assigned to the Commander Management Task Force, so our relationship went back a number of years, and he will be missed, but we look forward to working with the new monitor. I believe the members of the board have had time to review the presentation as well and are also aware of the historical information presented on the first few slides. So if it's agreeable, I'll proceed directly to Slide 4, where we begin the overview of the current status of compliance, detailed in the seventh report in comparison to the sixth report. So as you can see, in the seventh report, we're compliant with 83 of the 104 provisions. We were found non-compliant with 15 of the provisions that we're still working on. Four of those relate to use of force, two of them to training, three of them to force reporting and investigations, three of them to grievance, two of them to the use of restraints, and one to the early warning system, where we're still working. Two of the assessments are still pending, and four were found not to be applicable to this reporting period's assessment. So we had some good improvement over the sixth period, where we were compliant with only 51 of the provisions, so now we're up to 83. Moving on to the next slide, which discusses the update on the jail use of force training, we continue to make progress. The limitations under the current requirements due to the pandemic, though, we've had to scale back some of the training, so you'll see that our numbers went down in the seventh reporting period. Once we had the county and state emergencies declared in the beginning of March, we've had to limit the size and scope of some of the training classes. But we do continue to push forward, and the numbers speak for themselves. So we're committed to making sure we stay in compliance, and we've also worked with the monitors. They're aware of the limitations, you know, that COVID has put on us, so we continue to move forward. The next slide deals with the overall use of force statistics, comparing the first six months of 2019 to the first six months of 2020, which is the seventh reporting period. And you can see that we actually had some success with overall force decreasing by 35%. Our NCI is decreased by 41%. Our CAT I's decreased by 29%. The CAT II's went down 49%, and the CAT III's went up 100%, but that was from 2 to 4. So it wasn't a significant increase. The next slide just details the breakdown of Category 1 force incidents. So as you can see, in the first quarter of 2019, it was 214, and in the first quarter of 2020, it was 167. In the first quarter of 2019, or second quarter of 2019, excuse me, 215 versus 136 in the second quarter of 2020, for a total of, you know, decreasing from 429 to 303. And so it's worth noting also that some of the decrease can be attributable to the decompression and the depopulation due to the onset of the pandemic, but also it's important to remember that the first three months, January, February, and March, there wasn't the decompression completed, and it took us a couple months into the semester to get down to the 12,000. And I know Mr. Drueyan touched on that 12,000 figure that we can discuss after we're finished with the presentation, but, you know, unfortunately, right now, we're back up, as of this morning, closer to 15,000. The next slide just breaks down Category 2 uses of force, and again, where we had considerable success in lowering the numbers. The first quarter, it was 87 in 2019 compared to 48 in the first quarter of 2020, and in the second quarter, 68 in 2019 versus 30 in 2020. So it's almost a 50% decrease. The Category 3 uses of force in the downtown jail complex, so again, in 2019, we only had two. In 2020, we had four. However, none of the incidents involved significant injuries. Just two of them involved fights in our open yard on the 3,000 roof with some of our K-10s are serious and most serious and violent offenders that were engaged in assaulting each other, where deputies employed FN 303 pepperball rounds from a considerable distance away in order to try and stop them from assaulting each other. And so in two of those instances, inmates were struck with superficial injuries to their heads, so those bumped them up to Category 3. We had another takedown where an individual was taken down to the floor, and in the process, his head hit the floor. So erring on the side of caution, we made that a Category 3, so it would also be investigated by our Internal Affairs Force rollout team. And then one other instance where an individual was taken to the floor, and he ended up sustaining a broken rib. So there was some possibility that was part of a prior injury, but just again, erring on the side of caution, we bumped it up to a Category 3. So some of our force mitigation efforts that we think might be contributing to the decrease in force. We continue weekly the chiefs. Both division chiefs have weekly meetings that involve the units, the unit commanders, the training staff, as well as representatives from the Office of Inspector General. So those occur weekly. We also have an employee review system that has the use of force components. Our early warning system came into play. We implemented some new training methods, pushing out videos. We had our Training Bureau push out short videos so that we could have deputies view, you know, at their workstations. you know, at their workstations. So in addition to briefings before they begin their shifts, they can also be directed to watch short videos, and those things, we've found them helpful. We've streamlined the inmate grievance, or we're in the process of trying to streamline the inmate grievance investigation process. So that's a work in progress, where we want to be able to standardize it so we can have it searchable and more easily queried, so that we can get to the root of problems more quickly, rather than having it in a narrative form where we might not become aware of patterns of complaints or behavior. And we've also been actively working with partnering with Correctional Health Services on how to track the progress on medical complaints, because once a complaint is deemed to be medical in nature, it reverts over to CHS to handle, and we hadn't previously had a good system for reconciling whether they've been handled to conclusion based on some of the medical privacy rights that come into play. The next slide is an update on administrative investigation violations on a use of force In January of the first six months of 2019, you see, we initiated five cases. Four of those cases were closed, and one is still pending. Those cases resulted in discipline ranging from written reprimands to 20 days off. So for the first six months of 2020, we've also initiated five cases, and all five cases are still currently under investigation. And we also closed one additional case out in the first six months of 2020 that was from the prior quarter, and it was also a founded investigation. An update on administrative investigations, which I know you guys also discussed with Mr. Drewian. So in 2020, as you can see, we've actually initiated 64 investigations in custody as opposed to 44 the previous year, so they've increased by 45% for the first six months of 2020. The next slide deals with the inmate grievances. So in 2019, in the first six months, there were 3,510 general grievances and another 323 against staff, and almost a million and a half iPad requests. And in 2020, general grievances went up slightly to 3,600-plus, with 388 complaints against, those complaints against staff, and iPad requests had actually gone down slightly to just over 1.3 million. The top five, the next slide, the top five grievances. So in 2019, the top grievance fell into the other category, whereas in 2020, the top grievance was on living conditions. And I also noted that the top five grievances in 2019 accounted for about 50% of the total grievances, whereas the top five grievances in 2020 accounted for closer to 80% of the grievances. We believe that this is primarily associated with some of the living conditions and restrictions that we had to implement due to the COVID pandemic. You know, we had to cancel most programming, and public visitation has still not, in-person public visitation has still not been allowed, so that actually accounted for a lot of the grievances, and we're working on it. So we're trying to keep things, you know, the living conditions as best we can, and so actually getting these grievances helps us to react and see where we can improve conditions for the inmates to the extent that we can, where it's under our control. And so that actually concludes the actual slideshow presentation, so now I'd be happy to try and answer any specific questions any of the supervisors might have.
Sure. First of all, thank you for that presentation, we appreciate it, and I know Supervisor Han had some questions for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I mean, overall, it was encouraging to hear Richard Drewian's comments about big picture use of force has gone down in our jails, and even he, I think, even attributed that to just an overall culture change, which certainly we like hearing. And that's, the use of force number is the one that I really appreciate that has decreased. What I was going to ask, it still seems like there's 15 provisions that you're not in compliance with. I realize that that's down from the numbers in the last report, so that's progress. That still seems like a lot of provisions that you're not compliant with, and just kind of give us an idea, why are you still out of compliance, and how are you planning to come into compliance? Thank you.
Yeah, of course. So there are some struggles with the rate of compliance and how they're measured, particularly with some of the subjective provisions. So we meet with the monitors regularly, so like, most of them pertain to the use of force, is where use of force and use of force reporting would account for the most, and that's where, we're in compliance with many of the force provisions, and we all have benefited from the culture change. It's beneficial for the individuals that are incarcerated, it's also beneficial for all the county employees and other independent contractors that come in and out of our facilities. But they also, you know, hold us to a pretty high standard, and rightfully so, so that we're, you know, we're working on the training for our folks. You know, we have a lot of turnover, we have the new people coming in, so that's where the training comes in. I know Mr. Drewian talked about his concerns with some of the personal weapons and the head strikes, so that's actually something we've recently discussed with the monitors. So for the ROSIS panel, we just had one of their review processes where they come in and review uses of force, that they have some concerns with either the way the force was initiated or, and/or the way it was investigated, and it gives us a good look at what we need to improve on, and one of the things is personal weapons, where we're now looking at changing our policy to be more specific, as Mr. Drewian talked about, where I almost consider it akin to the sea change we had when we removed flashlights from the jails back in 2011, 2012, where everybody thought that was, you know, going to cause all sorts of problems for our deputies, and everything was going to fall apart, and it just didn't happen. It ended up being one of the best things that could have happened for everyone's safety, and we're able to modify the way we handled situations and the way force was applied, and it has prevented serious injuries over the years to staff and to inmates. I think that's where we are now with kind of the personal weapons, where he adds some concerns about what he called unprovoked strikes. But from our personnel standpoint, sometimes they feel, it's generally a point where they feel that they're imminently in danger of being assaulted, and obviously, we don't want to take away anybody's ability to defend themselves, and we don't want to create an unsafe environment, but that's where I liken it to the flashlight dilemma. Deputies at the time were thinking that there's no way they could safely execute their duties without flashlights, and we've showed them that we can, and now I think we'll be able to show them the same path with head strikes, with personal weapons, which more often than not tend to injure our personnel as well. And so that's just where I think we have some of the biggest struggles, but it's not something we're not going to be able to overcome. I hope I didn't go on too long there.
No. Supervisor Han?
Thank you, I'm done.
Okay. No, you did not. Do any of my colleagues, anyone else have any questions? Hearing them, we want to thank you for that report, we appreciate it, and I think that will be it, unless you have anything else to add before we vote on it.
No, that's all I have. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Assistant Sheriff Chase. Item 55 is before us. I will move, seconded by Supervisor Han, to receive and file the report. If there are no objections, that will be the order. Now, we're going to move on to item 60, the settlement of the matter entitled Ryan Charles Twymann et al. versus County of Los Angeles, which was held by Supervisor Ridley Thomas. Supervisor Ridley Thomas, are you there? Okay, then we are going to move on to item 65A, Registrar/Recorder Clerk Post-Election It's a report by Dean. Dean, are you available?
Can I? Yeah, thanks. Let me just start off by saying thank you to every voter in the county who exercised their right to vote in this past election. We had the highest number of votes cast ever in the county, and for that, we should be proud. And let me just start, before Dean gets on, to say, you know, the primary in March did not go as well as we had all hoped for, but I really wanted to take this opportunity to give credit to our county registrar, Dean Logan, who took all the feedback in March. And by the way, that feedback lasted throughout the summer, and it actually lasted up until the week before this election date. And he listened to everybody, he took time to be on calls with us, he took time to be on calls with constituents, and he did something about the things that went wrong. And I will say that the primary in March and this general election were like night and day. First, we sent a ballot to every registered voter, and vote by mail was used in record numbers. Official drop boxes were installed around the county, and more voters returned their ballots there than used the post office. And for those voters that showed up in person at vote centers, they were greeted with well-trained election workers, many of whom were county employees. The long lines that had plagued vote centers in March were nonexistent in October and November. I've visited several vote centers in my district, and I know my colleagues, you talked about how you did the same, and you talked to voters, and you talked to election workers, and we all had the same experience. Most people, workers, staff, and the voters said it was a good experience, in fact, some of them said it was the best experience they'd ever had. And so I just wanted to give our registrar recorder, Dean Logan, a chance to talk to us a little bit about how this past election went, what were some of the policies that made the difference, and I'm hopeful that March was really just a hiccup, and that our elections moving forward will be as smooth as this one. But I believe, thanks and congratulations all around for Dean Logan, job well done, and I really appreciated you. And I don't know if some of my colleagues wanted to say something first, but I know you have a quick post-election update to give us, Dean.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors, and thank you Supervisor Han for those comments. I really appreciate that, and I want to congratulate the county as a whole for the successful election. This is the type of thing that cannot happen without the full support and cooperation of an army of people, and that really is what it took in this case to get the job done, so really appreciate that. You touched on a lot of things I was going to say, and I know it's been a long meeting. I think there is a lot to report on, and we are still in the midst of the certification of this election. It's hard to believe, it's only been a week since election day, but that is the case, so we're continuing. So let me try to just briefly touch on some high points, and then if there are any questions. You know, when we started 2020, we were in a very different situation than we are now. We were, at the beginning of 2020, legacy voting systems in California, including the Inca Vote system that LA County had been using for decades, were decertified, and there was a requirement under state regulations for us to implement our new voting system, something that we'd been working on for well over a decade here. We faced new threats and challenges related to cybersecurity that had not, certainly at a level that we had not experienced before. We faced the acceleration of the presidential primary, which moved from the traditional date of June to March, and then we had a series of changes in election laws to implement. So we had, here in LA County, a change in the order of the ballot in a presidential year. We had an expansion of the California's conditional voter registration law that would allow voters to register and vote, leading up to an on-election day at any voting location in the state. And we had the Voters' Choice Act, which was really the enabling legislation that aligned to the Voting Solutions for All People Initiative that we had been working on for implementation in 2020. And then finally, 2020 was the first election year under the new election consolidation law, where our municipal and special district elections were consolidated almost in every case onto the even-year election ballot. So our ballot that we had last week was a very long ballot that included everything from the very local, the most local of contests and measures and governing bodies, all the way up to President of the United States. So it was a complex ballot in that sense. As Supervisor Han mentioned, we unveiled a lot of this in the March 2020 presidential primary, and it was a tough time, and we faced capacity issues, we faced some technical execution issues, logistical issues, and we lacked the data and the predictive analytics about voter behavior that were critical to, and proved critical to, the success that we had last week. So when I appeared before you to do a post-election briefing on March 10th, it was very different than it is today on November 10th. But at that meeting, I asserted to your board that the VSAP, the Voting Solutions for All People model, was a sound model, and that our long-term investment and hard work in LA County was worth the continued effort, and believed that we could demonstrate that that was a sound model. I also made a commitment to you to identify and address the deficiencies in the March election and to improve the process. And then days later, COVID-19 set in, and that changed the environment in which we had to look at conducting the general election. So in April, we did a report back to your board. It was a comprehensive review or audit of the March election. It was a very candid and transparent assessment. It included a detailed action plan with timelines and recommendations, 12 key milestones, 53 critical tasks, and over 160 detailed subtasks that proved to be the roadmap that we used to approach the November election. And I'm pleased to report to you that all of those milestones, tasks, and subtasks were completed for the general election, with few exceptions that are carryover items that are longer-term efforts that we need to work through here in the county. We also had the opportunity to conduct some special elections in April and May, in the early days of the public health orders around COVID-19, and use that as an opportunity to figure out, how are we going to do this on a large scale, where there were restrictions on public gatherings and the need for social distancing and PPE, and all of those things that just were new challenges on top of the challenges that we already faced in a presidential election cycle. So we focused on a number of key areas, and I'm just going to touch on a few of them. It was already referenced that probably the underlying reform or change for the November election that was so key was the expansion of vote by mail, where we mailed ballots to every registered voter in the county. Pivotal in that, from my perspective, was the early adoption by your board. You made a decision very early on, after the primary and after the onslaught of COVID, to of COVID to, uh, to take that action. That enabled us to build that into our plan, uh, from day one for the general election. That included things like, uh, doing countywide mailings to inform voters of the change, um, orienting voters to services like ballot tracking that proved to be very, uh, beneficial and, and, um, a feature that many voters enjoyed. The reference to the official vote by mail drop boxes, uh, turned out to be a phenomenal, uh, element of this election. We, we placed 404 of those secure official drop boxes throughout the county and over 53% of the vote by mail ballots that were returned came back through those boxes. Um, but we also had to look at new facilities and new staffing models because that was a different model of, of conducting elections. We already, even prior to this election, uh, we were the largest, um, volume of vote by mail activity in the country and for us adding the additional voters to that list, um, was really the equivalent of adding the, the size of Orange County on top of what we already had done for vote by mail. So, uh, a lot of effort that had to go into that, including looking at the three throughput modeling and projection of how are we going to be sure that we, uh, keep production going and that those ballots get counted and, and reported in a timely manner. Uh, beyond, uh, the expansion of vote by mail, uh, we took a hard look at our organizational capacity, made some significant changes to our structure in the department, brought on some senior leadership and operational oversight, um, that was key to, uh, holding us accountable to that action plan and that roadmap. Um, we had a number of things to address and improve with regard to technology. So the electronic poll books that were first used in, in March, um, where we had some issues. We, we went back and we held, uh, the vendor and ourselves accountable to improving that system. We partnered with AT&amp;T on the connectivity issue to ensure that we had a solid plan that was well-tested, uh, going into the, the general election. Uh, the ballot marketing devices, which are the key element of the in-person voting experience, uh, were, um, refined, uh, specific issues around, um, the, the ballot path and, uh, usability issues, the, the more button, um, that we, that we heard about in the primary, those were addressed. We took that back through state certification with the Secretary of State, which included third-party, uh, testing, review of the code, security testing, um, and really rigorous testing. Uh, I believe, um, more, uh, intense testing of a voting system than, than I've ever seen in my 30-plus years in elections administration. And, and I say that with pride because I think that's important for us to be able to say that our voting system withstood that, that scrutiny and that type of testing. Then we looked at some voter tools to add to the, the mix for, based on what we, what we learned in the earlier part of, of this year, including adding a, a vote center wait time monitor on our website so that voters could actually look if they were going to go vote in person and assess what the wait time might be at a particular location and then, uh, perhaps choose to go to a location that maybe had a shorter wait time. Particularly important given the, the need for, um, for the social distancing, uh, under the COVID, uh, public health orders. Uh, we also, uh, really, um, emphasized the tools of our interactive sample ballot, which, uh, allowed voters to mark their choices in advance of going to vote in person and to scan those into the system to expedite the, the process at the voting locations. Again, very important given the length of the ballot. And we instituted a quick check-in code that we put on our voter mailing so a voter could actually take that in and during that check-in process with the e-poll books, they could scan that in and that would expedite their, their process of, of check-in. We revamped the way we looked at, at selecting our vote centers. We did that, uh, both based on the capacity issues from the March election, but also based on the public health needs, the fact that we needed larger locations where we could spread out our equipment, spread out our workers, um, have the appropriate, um, PPE and, and protective equipment to make sure that voters didn't have to put themselves at, at risk, uh, their health at risk, uh, to, to go in and vote. Um, we, uh, changed to a new deployment and setup model where we actually use a third-party to set up the, the vote centers. That proved to be particularly important because that freed up our staff to focus on the logistics and the staffing of the vote centers while that company was out putting the equipment, uh, in place and, and making the, making sure the vote centers were already set up. We also established a, a new position at every vote center, a field technical support position at every location. So when there were issues of a technical nature, there was somebody on-site to address those issues. And importantly, in this election, we, uh, formed some great community partnerships where we were able to use, uh, sports facilities, iconic locations in the county that proved particularly, um, uh, helpful in the early voting period, but I would say beyond helpful. They also, I think, established a sense of, of commitment and, um, and spoke to the fact that we as a, as a county and as a community, we're going to ensure that despite the challenges of the public health crisis, uh, that, that our democratic process would still, uh, be carried out, uh, last week. And I will say that we far exceeded the minimum requirement of, uh, vote centers. We would have been required under the law to have 570 vote center locations for a four-day period. We ended up with, uh, 793 locations, uh, that were open for the final five-day period and included in that were 118 that were open for a full 11 days leading up to the election. Um, we, we, um, as, as was mentioned, we, we changed our election worker training, enhanced that, um, through the support of your board. We used the disaster service worker model, um, and had over 7,500 county employees working at our vote centers, um, very pivotal to the success, um, augmented by student workers and community workers, uh, a total of over 16,000 people who, uh, were working at, at those locations to ensure that the process, uh, worked well. And finally, we had a, a very comprehensive voter outreach and education campaign, uh, with a strong, consistent message that I think paid off. And that strong, consistent message was, uh, in these conditions, people needed to make a plan to vote. Um, we, we gave them a tool where they could customize that plan. We emphasized for those who were able to, to vote safely from home, using the vote by mail ballot and to choose from among the options for how to return that ballot. We encouraged people to vote early, uh, which was a, a, a complete shift from what we saw in March where people really waited until the, the final hours to vote. And we used expanded digital communications to offer direct and timely messaging, uh, to our voters. So the results, uh, were, as, as was mentioned, uh, record turnout. While the percentage of registered voters is not a record, um, it's still, it's still noteworthy. As of yesterday, we were at about 73% voter turnout and, and we're not done yet. We're still counting votes, but yesterday's count took us over the 4 million mark, uh, more than 4 million votes cast in this election, which is the highest number of votes, uh, cast in any election in LA County and in any local jurisdiction in the country. Uh, just to put that in perspective, our last record turnout as a percentage of voters was in the 2008 presidential election with about 3 point, just under 3.4 million votes cast. Uh, we now actually, uh, have more, more votes cast in this election than we had registered voters in 2008. So, uh, pretty, pretty phenomenal, uh, in that regard. But the execution of this election was, was, uh, successful as where, as well. We really used that 10-day early voting period to ensure that we were ready for, uh, anything that was going to happen on election day. As a result, we, um, we didn't have issues that traditionally, even in the, the former election model that we, that we frequently dealt with in terms of lockouts of voting locations in the morning or no-shows of our leads or assistant leads, um, those were for the most part, um, non-existent in this election. So we met our goal of safe and secure voting, uh, during the pandemic. The vote by mail model, um, as I mentioned earlier, really turned out to be, um, so fundamental to this. Uh, if you look at the results from yesterday's update, 80% of our turnout, uh, were voters who used their vote by mail ballots. Now, they used different methods for returning those vote by mail ballots, but that's a phenomenal number. Um, um, historically, LA County has been seen in the state of California as, as being the low, low propensity use of vote by mail ballots. And in this election, 80% of our turnout, uh, used those ballots. And then, uh, 53% of the returns, as I mentioned, uh, came back through the, the ballot drop-off, uh, boxes. Um, the early voting and election day operations were smooth with minimal vote times, uh, or minimal wait times, where we did experience that kind of in the final hours of election day, we were able to deploy additional resources to, to, uh, pick up that, that extra capacity. We had the technical agility by having, uh, people on-site to address issues as they came up. Um, and as a result of all of that, with the, um, early voting and the vote by mail process, we were able to produce, uh, substantial and more frequent updates, uh, from the, uh, of election results. So for example, our very first, uh, results shortly after, uh, eight o'clock after the polls closed represented 2.3 million ballots. Uh, and prior to that, uh, the highest we had had at that early report in an, in an election was about 300,000 ballots. So a substantial increase there. As of yesterday, um, we had added almost 1 million ballots to what we had counted on election day, uh, and for seven days out, that's, uh, that's, uh, very different than what we've seen before. Just to put, again, put that in perspective, you go back two years, um, to the 2018 election, we were at this point, a week after the election, we were still in the process of, of dealing with about, uh, 400,000 or more provisional ballots. And in this election, uh, our provisional ballots were down to roughly 2,000 ballots. So, uh, that really changed our ability to count more frequently and get more substantial results out, uh, to the public. So as we look ahead, I, I think that the good news is that, uh, we can now say, I think with confidence, that the voting model, uh, that we've adopted in LA County is sustainable and it's well-established, uh, by the action of your board and the way that the, the, um, Voters' Choice Act is written, uh, this model of mailing ballots to every registered voter in, um, all, all elections going forward, uh, is, is in place. That, that is the model that, that will, will be used. Um, we know we have more elections to come. Uh, the, the first one is probably going to be in early 2021 to, uh, to fill the, the Senate vacancy of Supervisor-elect Holly Mitchell's district. So that, that is, uh, something we're monitoring right now. Uh, we know we need to continue to build capacity. We need to, we were fortunate, um, in some ways because of the pandemic, that we were able to use facilities that were otherwise not being used, um, for other activities and that helped us a great deal. So we need to, we need to be proactive in, in planning ahead for when those facilities may not be available. Um, and then, uh, we need to continue to build on the benefits of what we've established here, um, in LA County as, as the, the first publicly-owned voting system in the country, which enables us to, um, to more frequently do enhancements and refinements to that based, based on changes in legislation, changes on, in technology and changes in voting behavior. So, um, with that, just to, to, to wrap up, uh, I just want to reiterate again that this was a full-county effort. Uh, we had tremendous support from, um, your board, from the CEO, from other county departments. Um, it's always dangerous to, to list specific, uh, departments, but I do want to, uh, specifically thank Dr. Farrar and Department of Public Health for their partnership, um, Lisa Garrett and DHR for their partnership with the, um, disaster service workers, uh, and Dr. Duarte from the LA County Office of Education for helping us, uh, to, to kind of get through barriers with using schools as voting facilities. Um, I want to thank the, the team here at the Registrar Recorder County Clerk who really put their all into this. Um, there, there were, there certainly was an opportunity or, or the possibility that people would, uh, abandon this, um, given what, what we went through in March and, um, and instead people, you know, pulled up their bootstraps and got to work and, and put everything they could into making November a success. And we did that with, uh, a lot of great partners, our, our vendor partners, our manufacturing partner, um, and your board. So, um, the promise of VSAP, I think, was fully realized in this election and that's something that we collectively in this county have worked at, uh, very hard. I think it, it's put us on the map in some regard. Uh, and I think a, a great way to sum it up would be to say that, you know, from a 95-year-old voter to a Generation Z voter and everything in between, uh, this system worked as it was designed and it got overwhelmingly positive reviews in its utility and in the intuitive ease of its use. So, um, we have, you know, we've succeeded. It was a bumpy road, but we've succeeded in designing and implementing a voter-focused, uh, voting system. And when I look around at, at what we're, what we've seen in the last week in terms of what, um, our colleagues in other states, um, have been facing, uh, it makes me really proud of the collaboration and the hard work that has taken place here. It's still hard work. It continues, um, and we still have to continue to, uh, improve it as we go, uh, but we made a lot of progress this year. And so I appreciate the, the support of your board and, um, look forward to what lies ahead.
Thank you, Dean, for that. Supervisor Han, do you have any other questions or comments? Supervisor Solis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, thank you, uh, Dean Logan for your presentation and, you know, success, uh, on this, uh, election. I, I think it was really hard. We learned a lot, but you carried it through. So a big high five to you and to your staff and especially to all the county employees that were out there manning these voting centers and helping people and the volunteers. We had some folks that I ran into that said they were doing it for 20 years or nine years or 10 years and you had the diversity that lined up there beautifully. Um, and to see record numbers of people voting was just incredible. I'm glad that we encouraged people to vote by mail. That, that's why we were able to allude having those backed-up lines when it came down to, you know, voting that Tuesday. And I, I really have to say thank you. I know we had a lot of little, minor bumps, but some of it wasn't our fault, like the incident in Baldwin Park where we had someone, uh, actually try to set on fire some of the ballots in one of the boxes there. But luckily, all that was, was, uh, mended. We took care of it and thanks to you and your speedy effort and, and listening to us. And I want to tell you that I really believe we have something going there when we advertise that we're going to have voting centers in popular iconic settings like the Dodger Stadium that's in the first district and Staples Center, which is in the first district, as well as the Fairplex. And I just have to say that, um, enthusiasm on the part of the public, being able to access those places was phenomenal. And especially for helping us put up sites in the Southeast LA and East LA District, you know, at the last minute, even if it was just for a vote by, even if it was just a flex vote center, that helped out. I can tell you that. I visited one in particular at Lincoln Plaza Hotel in Monterey Park that was a Project Room Key site and it's still one. I was incredibly honored and pleased to see that people there and the community were coming in and voting. But thank you for opening up those centers in Huntington Park, Walnut Park Elementary School, East LA Library and Eastmont Community Center. I personally visited all these places and want to tell you how impactful all of this has been. So, great job. We learned a lot. I look forward to seeing the full debrief and assessment once the election results are completed and certified and how we can improve upon the system. So thank you so much, Dean, for your hard work. You deserve a break. So, thank you. High five to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Supervisor Kewell, and then Supervisor Ridley Thomas.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Dean, I want to add my congratulations and my gratitude. Um, it's interesting watching, uh, those who are in charge of elections all around the country, even today, on the news, talking about how important it is for the people to have trust in that process, have trust in those systems. And, um, I think it, that you, uh, so interestingly took a really, really big step in that arena for the residents and the voters in the County of Los Angeles. Um, like my colleagues, uh, the feedback that I got from, uh, workers, from my office workers, from the departments, um, voters in my neighborhood, um, friends, everybody all around was so incredibly positive. I mean, I think that people felt very secure, well-prepared, not overly pressured, and not surprisingly, one of the biggest reasons was that so many people could vote by mail or vote, uh, and drop off their ballot in one of the ballot boxes. Um, and so, uh, the last three or four days, we saw some lines, but, you know, there would be three people, six people, maybe 10 at the most, uh, mostly. And it was just a very different experience. I also think it's interesting, some of my, um, senior volunteers who still felt like they wanted to venture out and, you know, be there even in the midst of the pandemic, um, were very, very pleased to have so many more younger people joining them as volunteers. And the mix was, uh, an interesting thing. My, uh, my volunteers noticed that a voter, when they had a question, would go generally to someone their age or someone who kind of looked like them, which we do a lot, um, in our lives without thinking about it. So I encourage you to continue seeing, you know, you can get people to volunteer, but I think it should be a mainstay every election that we use our county employees, that we, um, find ways to, uh, encourage them and make certain that they're recognized for it, because the training is long as you know. Um, but they did such a great job. Your staff overall did a magnificent job. And I- And I, I think people really liked going to a place with a ballot already filled out. I saw people in the park where I actually deposited my ballot, doing little happy dances after they, you know, deposited their ballot and doing selfies with the deposit boxes. So I, I think the, the choice for everybody was a big deal, too. And so congratulations and deepest, deepest thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Kuhl. Supervisor Ridley-Thomas.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Han, thanks for bringing in the motion. We are essentially seven days removed from what was an historic election and two days removed from history being made all over again. It's in full recognition of the weight of the moment and full acknowledgement of all who came before. I want to exercise a point of personal privilege to the extent that it's acceptable, Madam Chair, and take just a moment to recognize not only the election of Vice President Joe Biden, but the election of Senator Kamala Harris as the first African-American person of color to hold the office of Vice President, to be elected to that office. A candidacy is the representation of so many promises finally fulfilled, so many hopes and dreams. We also acknowledge the 4 million Los Angeles County residents who cast their ballot on November the 3rd safely and securely. The county took significant steps to plan for the wide array of logistical, constitutional, political complexities, including the extraordinary public health risk of the coronavirus pandemic. In light of the voting experience reported in other states, I'm proud of the efforts here in the County of Los Angeles to expand voting options, reduce barriers, and make voting more accessible. It is, after all, what the Voting Rights Act in its best manifestation is about. So on Election Day, wait times in the Second District remained under 30 minutes throughout the day. And it was a day without any significant incident or hiccup, which is the best and highest compliment or endorsement that the Registered Recorder County Clerk could be afforded. So we thank you, Dean Logan, for your leadership, your endurance. We thank your staff and all the stakeholders that led to an outcome that we can all celebrate with a high degree of praise and recognition. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Ridley-Thomas. And I, going last, I think everything that, that's been said, I echo everything. And Dean, you know, I'm very proud of the fact that with a few bumps in the beginning, you quickly rectified the issues and didn't let that get in your way in terms of moving forward. And there's no question in my mind, COVID definitely presented a lot of issues for some people who had a fear, but you, through the work that, that was done through the volunteers, made sure that each voting place was safe. So I just want to thank you on behalf of all 10 million constituents for really making LA County proud. And I think that, as you said, this is a system that, moving forward, we've got lessons learned, but we will always be looking to, to, to make it better. But at this point, I have to say, job well done. And, you know, please thank your staff, and I want to thank all the volunteers. And I know that we all were originally concerned about the amount of hours each person would be putting in, but I, I know my staff, not one complained. They felt it was an honor to be a part of this historical time. And there's no question in my mind that together, you made it happen with many volunteers, but you as the lead set the tone. So good job.
Thank you very much.
So with that, I'm seeing if Item 65A is before us. Supervisor Han is going to, is going to make the motion to move it. Seconded by Supervisor Solis to receive and file the report. If there are no objections, that will be the order. Now we're going to go back to Item Number 30, which was held by Supervisor Ridley-Thomas. It's the Harbor UCLA Medical Center Replacement Program.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our board spends a lot of time focusing on how to best serve the needs of the residents of Los Angeles County and indeed the built environment where our services are provided, particularly for the provision of healthcare. It's a critical component of that. The Harbor UCLA Hospital was built in the year 1962. Unfortunately, it has not withstood the test of time. It is indisputably our most outdated campus, and the hospital will not meet seismic requirements by the year 2030. And it is our sole remaining facility where many patients have to share rooms with up to three other patients. If you experience more than one working elevator upon entering the building, you should consider yourself lucky. Of course, the complete transformation of this campus, which is needed to provide care in an environment that promotes the dignity and worth of both our patients and our employees, requires substantial investment. I help this item to acknowledge the tremendous need and to thank the team that has helped devise a plan to address it. Pleased that the county is moving forward with what promises to be a state-of-the-art inpatient building, both for psychiatric and general uses. May I then thank both Dr. Christina Galley and Dr. John Sharon for their collaboration on this. I also want to thank the CEO's team, led by Dave Howard, Brad Bolger, and Amir Alam, who worked tirelessly, Madam Chair, and members of the board, with the Department of Public Works and Harbor UCLA Campus Leadership to refine the scope and budget in a manner that enables us to move forward. The implementation of these new facilities will be done in tandem with that of the Lundquist Institute, which will make a, make it a premier location in the region, not just for patient care, but for innovation, research, and biomedical progress. Harbor UCLA provides care for some of the most vulnerable members of our society, specifically within the south and western portions of the county. The transformation of this campus over the coming decade will allow the county to make the best use of our land in a manner that allows our patients to be best served, whether it's in an ambulatory or inpatient setting, or through the cutting-edge work being done by the Lundquist Institute. I'm simply excited to see that this integrated and cohesive vision will in fact take shape. Madam Chair, I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Supervisor Ridley-Thomas. Seeing that no one else is requested to speak on this item, this motion to the board is moved by Supervisor Ridley-Thomas. I will second it. To approve this item, Madam Executive Officer, please call the rule.
Item 30 is before you. Supervisor Solis? Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Ridley-Thomas?
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley-Thomas, aye. Supervisor Kuhl?
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Now we'll move on to Item Number 60, settlement of the matter entitled Ryan Charles Twiman et al. versus County of Los Angeles. It was held by Supervisor Ridley-Thomas.
Madam Chair and members of the board, this settlement agreement resulting from the deputy involved shooting of Ryan Twiman is a sobering reminder of the families and communities' need for justice, healing, and compassion. Although a $3.9 million settlement is unusually large, it is no substitute for justice. Justice, indeed, requires an investigation with legally mandated oversight by the Office of the Inspector General to ensure that careless tragedies like this one are not repeated. Such oversight is a critical part of addressing the lack of training and accountability and the failure of leadership to address issues that continue to afflict the department. Beyond the wrongful death of Mr. Twiman and costly settlement that is attached to it, a lasting consequence of this incident is the painful trauma and grief that it causes his family, his friends, and the community at large. This tragedy, Madam Chair, further underscores the need for this board to continue building on the work of the Family Assistance Program, the Office of Violence Prevention, and other compassionate trauma-informed services that help families and communities heal from grief and trauma. There's still a lot of work to do. We know that, and I hope we will continue to build on these best practices, these promising practice in term, practices in terms of trauma and violence prevention and treatment. These efforts can and do make a difference. Therefore, we must continue to provide them and make them better. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Ridley-Thomas. Are there any other Supervisors that would like to make remarks on this item? Caring none. Item 60 is before us, moved by Supervisor Ridley-Thomas. Seconded by Supervisor Han to approve this item. Madam Executive Officer, please call the rule.
Item 60 is before you. Supervisor Solis? Supervisor Solis? Supervisor Ridley-Thomas?
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley-Thomas, aye. Supervisor Kuhl?
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
We are now moving on to Item 60.
Sorry, four to zero.
What? Four to zero.
Yeah, I'll, I'll text them.
We're now moving on to 65F, recognizing November 11th, 2020 as Veterans' Day in the county. That was held by Supervisor Kuhl.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, nothing reminds me of how far apart we are and how, what we're missing, really, by not being on the dais, as much as thinking of the people that we would honor each week and, you know, the kind of ceremony in which we engaged. And I, I just thought, rather than just let this go by, I wanted to take a little time, not too much, to recognize our nation's veterans and to shed some light on LA County's commitment to veterans and to their family members. In 2019, Congress approved the 75th Anniversary of World War II Commemoration Act, recognizing the end of World War II. It was known as Victory in Europe Day or VE Day to honor and thank all of our veterans of World War II. And the act calls for a year-long tribute to educate the public and pay tribute to the contributions made by our veterans of World War II. In LA County alone, we will honor the lives of nearly 90,000 veterans, including an estimated 21,053 World War II veterans who have been laid to rest at the Los Angeles National Cemetery, which I'm very proud to say is located in the Third District, as well as veterans of all eras who are our friends, our family, our neighbors among us. This year, LA County has taken some major steps to better serve our veterans and their families through a public-private partnership between the Department of Mental Health, the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, local veteran-serving organizations, academic institutions, philanthropy, and most importantly, members of the military community across the eras. The county has launched the Veteran Peer Access Network, or VPAN. In this program, veteran peers engage their fellow military community members in need and help them in navigating access to necessary resources. In addition to launching this novel program, our Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, under the leadership of General Ruth Wong, has spent months creating a video about the rich history of World War II and connecting with our surviving LA County World War II veterans and their families to preserve that history for all of those who come after. I've asked General Wong and Dr. John Sharon to speak very briefly today about each department's contributions to the veteran community, but before they speak, I want to express immense gratitude and support to our nation's veterans and our current service members as we bring in Veterans' Day 2020 tomorrow. So if I may, I'd like to ask just two minutes from General Wong and two from Dr. Sharon, if that's all right, Madam Chair.
General Wong?
Yes. Good afternoon, Supervisor Kuhl, Madam Chair, and Board of Supervisors. To all the veterans and their families in Los Angeles County, we thank you for serving our country and honor those veterans who continue to serve their community through acts of kindness, whether it be visiting the sick, serving meals, volunteering at hospitals and food distribution centers, or providing transportation. Thank you. 2020 will be remembered for many things, including COVID-19. But we should not forget that 75 years ago was the ending of World War II. Over 16 million Americans served during the war. Some did not come home, and those that did, we call our unsung heroes. Servicemen and women from ethnic and racial backgrounds contributed to Allied victory in 1945, proving that when we all fight for one common goal, we can achieve anything. This year, since we are not able to honor our World War II veterans with a special in-person program, we instead created a documentary film that speaks to their heroism. This film is dedicated to our nation's brave men and women who answered the call to serve our country. We must never forget the reason for fighting. Our goal is to create a legacy of our heroes, so their children, grandchildren, and future generations will remember their contribution, dedication, and sacrifice. The film is available on our department's Facebook page as well as our county channel 36. It is our hope that these stories resonate with each of you, perhaps reminding you of a friend or a relative, and that you enjoy hearing these impactful stories from the greatest generation. On behalf of our County Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, we thank you for your service to our country and continue to honor the 300,000 veterans in Los Angeles County and their families who have sacrificed so much. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for the opportunity to speak today. Happy Veterans' Day to our veterans and our families.
Thank you, Dr. Sharon.
Thank you very much to, to the board and especially to Supervisors Kuhl and Barker for sharing veterans and veterans. 11/11 is a great day to why speaks the nature of military service and feed on the calendar for our United States of America. As our first president, George Washington is often credited as stating about 23 decades ago, "The willingness with which our young people are likely to serve in any war, no matter how justified, shall be directly proportional to how they perceive the veterans of earlier wars were treated and appreciated by their nation." We must never forget this notion. Our veterans must be honored and celebrated every day and in an especially public way on Veterans' Day, which is tomorrow, 11/11. On that note, this board in our county, led by the Department of Military and Veteran Affairs and the Department of Mental Health, are showing big appreciation by establishing the Veteran Peer Access Network. This new program, which is undergoing significant expansion right now, offers veterans and military families the opportunity to serve as battle buddies for others in the military community who are experiencing renegation challenges in civilian life, whether it be due to undereducation, unemployment, mental illness, addiction, criminal justice involvement, or other issues that lead to isolation, homelessness, and increase the risk or other issues that lead to isolation, homelessness, and increase the risk of suicidal thinking and behavior. Let me end by saying that at the same time the VPAN is a workforce development initiative for veterans, it is a highly informed and strategic investment of our taxpayer dollars that recognizes veterans as civic assets and leaders whose commitment to service must be leveraged more across our systems to uplift our communities across the board. Thank you for this chance to address the Board and to pay respect to our veterans.
Thank you, Dr. Sharon.
Madam Chair, can I say something?
Yeah, I want to say something as co-author, but I wanted to see if Supervisor Kuhl is finished. Supervisor Kuhl?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you for co-authoring. Please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I want to thank you Supervisor Kuhl for allowing me to co-author this motion. Veterans Day serves as a reminder of the sacrifices made by all the men and women who have served in our armed forces. As we near almost two decades of the war on terror, it's important to remember that our post-9/11 veterans have been at the forefront of this conflict. The military and veterans are a part of the fabric of this county and of this country, and I would like to recognize the estimated 300,000 veterans that reside in the county and estimated 700 employees in the county workforce concurrently serving in the armed forces. As a county, we are committed to working to provide our veterans, service members, and their families access to services and benefits that they have rightfully earned. This year, we move to address the issue of veteran suicides through the feasibility study of a countywide veteran suicide review team, which is currently being worked on by county, state, and federal agencies in collaboration with county partners. As Supervisor Kuhl said, we also are continuing to provide services through the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, the Veteran Peer Access Network within the county, the Department of Mental Health, and the Veterans Mental Evaluation Team through the Sheriff's Department. We've also placed homeless veterans as a priority to get housed in this county. There is no question that while tomorrow is Veterans Day, each and every day, we should honor our veterans for their sacrifices and thank them for their service. So I would like to thank all of those who have served, and to the men and women who are currently serving all over the world for your service to our nation. Thank you. Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just really just wanted to add my appreciation, both to Supervisor Kuhl and you, and of course, to all of our veterans in Los Angeles County. Thank you, General Wong, for your comments, Dr. Sharon, for your comments as well. I remember last year, we had the first-ever Veterans Day L.A., and we held it at the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum with the help of our Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, and I know that they are continuing that work this year. Of course, it's got to be virtual, but I look forward to when we can again, in person, have Veterans Day L.A. for the remembrance of all of our veterans. My dad was a proud veteran of World War II. He served in the Navy and proudly wore his Veterans of Foreign Wars little hat always on Veterans Day. So thank you to all of our veterans, and I agree, it's just, it seems like that's the one nerve that strikes people equally here in L.A. County is the shame of having veterans who are homeless and sleeping on our streets, the fact that they have served their country with distinction and honor, and yet now don't have a roof over their head. And I know I'm going to recommit myself to finishing a project that I've started in my district in Downey, which will be 80 apartments for formerly homeless veterans and their family. So thank you for bringing this forward Supervisor Kuhl, and let us take a moment tomorrow to remember our veterans and what they mean to us, and again, recommit ourselves to adding resources so that we can really address the mental health challenges that many of them have. They may, their injuries on the battlefield have lasted to mental health challenges off the battlefield, but we know they're no less serious or severe. So thank you very much, and I honor our veterans everywhere tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Han. Supervisor Solis?
Yes, thank you so much. I want to thank Supervisor Kuhl and you, Madam Chair, for bringing this forward. I join you in honoring our servicemen and women, and also remind people that today is also Marine Corps 245th Birthday, so I want to wish them a very happy birthday. And along with all of you, I just want to let the folks know in our district and the 1st district tomorrow, at Atlantic Park in East L.A., we'll be hosting a virtual celebration for veterans at 11 o'clock, and on Friday, we are hosting a food bank drive dedicated to our veterans in East Los Angeles on Mednick Avenue, Belvedere Park, and that'll start at 9:00 a.m. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Anybody home?
I'm here. What happened?
Where is our chair?
Uh-oh. Sounds like somebody got cut off.
She's gone. She's gone, let's move on.
Okay, so let's call, is she out? Okay, then let's call a vote on this, right? This item is before us, 65F, moved by Supervisor Kuhl, seconded by Barker, who stepped away momentarily. Please call the roll.
They're all gone.
Are you there? Hello?
Yeah. Calling the roll.
Hello? Yeah, say something, please.
Oh, I'm speaking.
Hello, casting, can you hear me? Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Catherine, we can hear you.
Okay, because I don't, for some reason, it didn't work. Keep your mic on.
So call the roll now.
Yes, we're calling it, but no one was answering, so we thought you all couldn't hear us, but you couldn't.
65F is before you Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Ridley-Thomas.
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley-Thomas, aye. Supervisor Kuhl.
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl, aye. Supervisor Han.
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker.
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Now we move on to item A4, a discussion in consideration of necessary actions relating to the county's homeless crisis as requested at the board meeting of May 17, 2016. Supervisor Ridley-Thomas, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. In January of this year, Mayor Dared Steinberg and I, as co-chairs of the Governor's Council and Regional Homelessness Advisors, participated in the release of a comprehensive crisis response strategy. Chief among those 40 strategies was a recommendation to secure ongoing state revenue to address homelessness. In February, the governor, during a State of the State address, reiterated this sustainable revenue, that sustainable revenue was needed to achieve sustainable outcomes related to homelessness. The Bring California Home Plan is hoping to deliver on that sustainable revenue notion to aid our most vulnerable residents. Madam Chair, on November the 9th, a statewide coalition of homelessness and housing advocates and organizations launched the Bring California Home Plan. The Bring the California Home Plan calls for California to invest $2.4 billion annually, which combined with federal and local resources, could reverse the cycle of homelessness in our county and throughout the state. To raise the needed revenue, the coalition's plan will consider closing loopholes and addressing a range of issues that are fundamentally important to success. So I therefore move that we authorize the county to co-sponsor the Bring California Home Plan and direct the chief executive office's Sacramento office staff to take all appropriate legislative advocacy actions to support this effort. I would so move, Madam Chair.
I would second, Madam Chair.
Salya, are you there?
No.
It's been moved and seconded.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah. It's been moved and seconded.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Okay, there you go. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, do not turn off your mic, because that's the key right there. It's been moved and seconded, we please call the roll.
Item A4 is before you Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Ridley-Thomas.
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley-Thomas, aye. Supervisor Kuhl.
Aye.
Supervisor Kuhl, aye. Supervisor Han.
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker.
I abstain.
Supervisor Barker abstains. Four to zero with one abstention.
That concludes the items on the agenda at this time.
Madam Chair, I do have a special that I wanted to bring in.
Oh, I'm sorry Supervisor Solis, go ahead.
Yes, I have a motion, and it's equitable distribution of COVID-19 vaccine. We heard, we had a great discussion and debate on this earlier. The County Department of Public Health daily COVID-19 report and briefings provide an alarming and worrying insight to COVID-19 positivity and fatality rates in the disadvantaged and underserved communities of color. The Board must prioritize an equitable distribution of vaccine throughout our Los Angeles County region similar to the provisions of testing sites and other resources provided during the COVID pandemic. The health order compliance outreach, education, and enforcement in the high-risk disadvantaged communities has been particularly challenging for our county public health and law enforcement officials. I therefore move that the Board of Supervisors direct the Department of Public Health to provide a report back to the Board in 30 days that provides methodology for equitable distribution of the 20 million-plus doses of COVID-19 vaccine, prioritizing the county's COVID-19 testing sites, county-owned properties such as senior centers and libraries, as well as federally qualified health clinics to serve as vaccine distribution sites. With that, Madam Chair, I ask for your aye vote.
I can hear you.
Hello?
Hello Supervisor?
Can you hear me? Yes. What happened? Did we lose everybody?
I don't know.
I'm still here. Are we voting on this today Supervisor Solis?
Yes, we can. Because it's a report back.
Okay, okay.
Would you second?
I would.
Okay. Catherine, are you on, Chair of Women? But Salya, can you?
Let's just do what we want, Hilda.
Okay. Okay, Salya, can you please call the roll? It's been moved by myself and by Han. Can we call the roll, please? Salya, where are you?
I think the problem is that Salya and our.
Catherine, they're in the same room.
They got to turn on their phones.
Yeah, they're having trouble with their access.
Okay, I vote aye.
Okay, so I'll call the roll then Supervisor Solis.
Wait, wait, that doesn't work.
Okay.
Because they'll be back on, and I think we'll, let's take a roll call vote on that when they come back on. What do you say, Madam Vice Chair?
I have, no, I have no problem. I mean, we're teasing. I'm sure that we just lost communication for a short minute, but somebody should be calling them, tell them they should get on the phone or something.
Yeah, I think they can hear, but they can't be heard.
Oh, wow.
How about moving to adjournments?
Yeah, let's move to adjournments. I think Janice is first.
Janice, you want to go?
Okay, sure. Okay, so, and I know I have some adjournments, but I know Sheila, you're probably going to be doing Alan Sturbeck, and I hope you will include all members on that one.
I will, and I will.
Thank you. But I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Helen Cullen, who was 90 when she passed away. She was born in New York, and in 1953, she married James Cullen and lived in New Jersey until they moved out to California in 1956. Upon arriving in California, James and Helen settled in Torrance, where she worked for Hughes Aircraft until she stepped away to focus on raising her family. She was very dedicated to her family and their local community. She attended St. Philomena in Carson, where her children attended school. She dedicated herself to service as a pole worker, as school crossing guard, as well as volunteering for many years at Kaiser in Harbor City. She survived by her four children, her eight grandchildren, one of whom is my staff member, Chris Cullen, and eight great-grandchildren. I also move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Anthony Tony Rodich, who was 73 when he passed away. Tony was a man with a thousand stories, which apparently he told thousands of times. Tony was born and raised in San Pedro, and his life was dedicated to helping the community. He was involved in the Boys and Girls Club at a young age and was named Community Chest Boy of the Year. Tony loved sports. In high school, he lettered in football, baseball, and track, and went on to play both football and baseball for Harbor College. After his own athletic career ended, he coached Senior League Baseball and Football. He appreciated all the connections he made through his years of being on team and was involved in arranging numerous team reunion. I got to know him because he was, I guess he was almost a founding member of the San Pedro Sports Walk of Fame. This was the harbor area's idea of in tummings stars for different athletes who had something to do with the harbor area. So all along downtown San Pedro, now all the way to the waterfront, you can see names of various athletes who are in the sidewalk, and that was, he was very involved in that. He survived by his daughter Michelle, two grandchildren, his brother Jerry, and two sisters, Mary and Velma. And I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Clifford Irvin, who was a resident of Long Beach and a longtime harbor area community member. He passed away at 98. He was born in San Pedro and spent most of his life in Wilmington. Cliff served with the L.A. County Sheriff's Department for 27 years. He then went on to work for Pacific Bell as a lineman. Cliff dedicated much of his time to giving back to the community. He served for 14 years as a member of the California Senior Legislature and was an advocate for seniors in the justice system. Cliff was also an active member of the Masons, the Shriners, the American Legion, and Elks Club. He was preceded in death by his wife Catherine. Cliff is survived by his foster daughter Susan and friend and caregiver Cindy. I also move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Rose Marie Bazanich, who was 90 when she passed away. She was a lifelong resident of San Pedro. Rose loved her family and her community. When she wasn't cooking and entertaining her loved ones, she could be found volunteering her time at Little Sister of the Poor. She was also an active member of several local organizations like Republican Women's Club, the Elks Club, the Dalmatian Club, Women's Auxiliary, where she served as the very first president. She was preceded in death by her husband Bill. She survived by her children Anthony and Suzanne, and her two grandchildren, Brian and Allison. And I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of William Vincent. Bill, who was a resident of Rancho Palos Verdes, passed away at the age of 92. After serving our country during the Korean War, Bill went on to become a teacher and a football coach. He was a devoted Catholic and parishioner at Holy Trinity Catholic Church in San Pedro. Bill will be most remembered for his 34 years coaching in the South Bay, where he was known as the player's coach who cared deeply for his players. He was preceded in death by his eldest son Gregory. He survived by his wife Eileen, their five sons, 16 grandchildren, and one great-grandchildren. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm back. So I move that we adjourn today, we do so in memory of Constance Bidgood, a former employee of Los Angeles County, who recently passed away at the age of 87. Connie was preceded in death by her husband of 40 years, William Bidgood. After retiring from Los Angeles County, Connie and Bill spent many years living in Baja, California. They were longtime members of the Desert Sunrise Camper Club and the Lancaster Elks Lodge. Connie was a member and an officer of the Emblem Club through the Lancaster Elks Lodge. Connie is survived by three children, Edward, William, and Jeffrey, two stepchildren, Audrey and Cliff, six grandchildren, one step-grandchild, and 11 great-grandchildren. Also that we adjourn in memory of Karen Freenham, a resident of Duarte, who recently passed away at the age of 68. Karen began. Chamber of Commerce in 1989, and became Executive Director in 1993. She began working in Monrovia in 2000 and was a former Executive Director of the Monrovia Chamber of Commerce. She worked in the Monrovia Chamber for many years before she started her final career as Nancy Bond Insurance Services. She loved shopping, decorating, house projects, and gardening. She was fun and funny, humble, and happily served others, most often in the background. Karen is survived by her two sons, Jason and Zachary, and four grandchildren. Also that we adjourn in memory of Dr. Marvin Frieder, a longtime Antelope Valley resident. Marvin was known for his support of local nonprofit organizations. He was an avid collector of words and was renowned for his ability to catch and capture his audience after reading the New York Times and Los Angeles Times Daily for display of his vocabulary club meetings. Marvin is also revered as playing old guy tennis with his old guy friends. He loved opera, dining out, and socializing with friends and family. Marvin is survived by his wife Sydney, children Mitchell, Heidi, and Charles, four grandchildren, and his, and a sister. And last, I move that we adjourn in memory today of Alice Godfrey, a resident of San Marino who recently passed away at the age of 92. Alice earned her master's degree in education from Cal State LA, after which she was a director of the Gifted and Talented Education Program for the San Marino School District. She was a longtime educator, philanthropist, and volunteer, serving on the Board of Trustees of the San Domenico School for Girls, member of the Social Service League of Catholic Charities, and the Christ Child Society, led a Bible study program at St. Felicity and Perpetua, and benefactor to the Carmelite Sisters of the Most Sacred Heart of Los Angeles. Known affectionately as Big Al and Mrs. Godfrey, she was known to respond with a warm smile and a hug. Alice is survived by six children, Peter, Stephen, Mary Alice, Sally, Joan, and Emily, her grandchildren, and her great-grandchildren. Supervisor Solis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory of Gilbert Polanco Sr. He was a dedicated volunteer who gave 31 years of service to East Los Angeles and South Elmani communities as a volunteer coach with the East LA Bobcats Youth Pop Warner Football Program, and as a volunteer at Obregon Park coaching youth basketball and baseball, and as a volunteer teaching youth how to fish at the Belvedere Park Fishing Club and assisting at countless Whittier Narrows All Night Cat Fish Fishing Derbies. Mr. Polanco was a committed husband, father, and grandfather. He's survived by his wife Mary, son Gilbert Jr., and daughter Arlene. He will be missed by park staff and the youth he coached, and the many friends he made along the way. May he rest in peace. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory of David Barron, who passed away on November 1st at the age of 79. He served as the Monterey Park Elected City Clerk for 25 years. During his tenure, David oversaw the administration of countless incoming and outgoing council members, city managers, and staff. After his retirement, he remained involved in public service, including the Monterey Park Optimist Club and the Greater Monterey Park Chamber of Commerce. He also founded his own community newspaper, The West Valley Journal. He'll be missed by the Monterey Park community, and may he rest in peace. And lastly, I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory of Luisa Sanchez Baca. Luisa Sanchez Baca was 96. She died peacefully in the morning of October 23rd of this year. She was born in Puerto de Luna, New Mexico on February 13, 1924. Luis was loved by everyone who came to know her for her kindness, wonderful spirit, and strong devotion to her family. Luis was a food service worker at the University of New Mexico, and later as a friendly hostess at the McDonald's Restaurant on Fourth Street, retiring at the age of 87. She found much joy in attending a wide variety of events, be it museums or professional wrestling, but especially being around family. Luis is survived by her daughter Rose Lee and her sons Manuel Baca, who is Rio Hondo College Board of Trustee and longtime friend, and Mark, Richard, and Ben, along with 15 grandchildren and 18 great-grandchildren, as well as her extended family. May she rest in peace. And lastly, I move that we adjourn in memory of Mona Gail Sparks Johnson. Mona Gail Sparks Johnson was born on March 11, 1948, in Orville, Ohio, passed away on October 24th of this year at the age of 72. She enrolled in the military and completed her commitment to the Navy in 1969. Shortly after, she relocated to the city of Clermont in LA County, where she began her career at Mount St. Mary's College as an instructor and worked there for 32 years. Ms. Sparks Johnson always brought hope, strength, and courage to the people she encountered. She loved advocating for those who needed help and encouraged many others to follow their dreams. She was a former president of the National Council of Black Women and held a seat on the governing board of the Tri-City Mental Health in the city of Pomona. She was a member of the National Alliance of Mental Illness, the Business and Professional Women Organization, and the Antioch Missionary Baptist Church. She was survived by her husband Floyd Johnson, her three sons, Denell, Jarrett, and Floyd Johnson II, 11 grandchildren, one brother, three sisters, and a host of extended family members and friends, who will all miss her dearly. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
Chair, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Diane De Prima. She was born August 6, 1934, in Brooklyn, New York, and passed away at the age of 86 on October 25 in San Francisco after a battle with Parkinson's disease. She graduated high school and then attended Swarthmore College for two years before dropping out to pursue her passion of becoming a poet. And a poet she was. Her poetry debut came in 1958 with the release of collected poems titled "This Kind of Bird Flies Backward." She relocated to San Francisco in 1968, and after partnering with City Lights, a popular iconic bookstore and publishing house, she published more than 40 poetry collections, novels, and memoirs. Her final major poetry collection titled "The Poetry Deal" was released in 2014. In 2009, Miss De Prima was named the poet laureate of San Francisco by former Mayor Gavin Newsom. She will be remembered as a feminist poet of the beat generation, a devoted mother, a champion for other female artists, and for her artistic contributions that dramatically changed the course of 20th century literature. Miss De Prima is survived by her partner of 42 years, Shepherd Powell, five children, Alexander, Dominique, Jean, Rudy, Tara, two brothers, four grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, extended family, friends, and those of the arts community who will miss her dearly. She is the mother of our very own Dominique De Prima, who hosts Front Page on radio station Madam President, Madam Chair, and colleagues, I'd ask that you join me in acknowledging the passing of Dr. Donald Henderson, born January 15, 1946, in Jacksonville, Florida. He passed on November 1st in Tarzana at the age of 74. He was an alumnus of Howard University, the University of Florida, and Harvard University, where he received his undergraduate medical and master's degrees respectively. As a practicing physician, Donald Henderson operated in offices in Inglewood and Los Angeles while caring for patients at Cedar Sinai and Centinela Medical Centers. He served on several boards, including the American Cancer Society, Blue Shield of California, and the Advocates of Professional Golf Association Tour. Dr. Henderson will be remembered as an avid golfer for his warm smile, welcoming demeanor, attentiveness to his patients and their families, his willingness to assist those in need, and love for his family. He is survived by his wife Monica, the children, Dax, Shasta, and Eric, who is a deputy in my office here, three siblings, Carol, Daryl, and Joyce, his cousin Patty, extended family and friends, colleagues in the medical community, who will miss Donald Henderson most assuredly. Madam Chair and colleagues, I'd ask that you join me in adjourn-